You're talking about, I was here for six years. Six years, six years and a half. And we had our house. No, that time we did, they made us, we had to wear dresses and black dresses.
I guess it's like a top.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yeah. Women had dress houses. And we had to take the year ahead of us when everybody had to take six quarters, we were a quarter system, and take six quarters of the year. Everybody knew how to split. I was in Florida, so I knew how to split. But anyway, that didn't matter. That just changed the things. I mean, I'm glad you could hear me.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's Committee of the Whole for October the 15th, 2019. We'll call the meeting to order. City Council should have the minutes from the October 1st Committee of the Whole meeting. Do I have any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a move to approve? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are carried. Order appointments, tree commission, Ms. Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have three vacancies. I will start with the first one. John Green has served one full term, and he did not submit an application for a second term, so I'd like to nominate Seth Hunt for that position.
Okay. Nomination of Seth Hunt. Do we have a second?
Seconds.
Okay. And then for the second position, Ashley Stewart, also has served one full term, and so that seat is open, and I'd like to nominate Jennifer Morris.
Second. The nomination and a second for Jennifer Morris, okay?
And then for the third position, to the vacancy being replaced by, or replacing Blake Prestige, I would like to nominate Donna Young.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Donna Young. Okay, we'll take these one at a time. We have a motion and a second for Seth Hunt. Is there any discussion about Seth Hunt? Any comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll make that nomination official later on in the agenda. Jennifer Morris, is there any discussion or comments about Jennifer Morris? Anybody would like to share? None? All in favor of Ms. Morris, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll appoint Ms. Morris later on in the agenda. And then finally, Donna Young. Any comments about Ms. Young? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Ms. Young is carried forth, too, and we'll make that official later on in the agenda. Okay, now, item four, the Board of Equalization, Assistant Manager Crouch.
I think, as you may be aware, the Lee County Board of Equalization is unique in terms of, there's a few boards that are unique. This one is even more interesting. Usually, the largest city within a county will nominate three people for one slot, and the Alabama Department of Revenue will choose that appointee. This board is very important in helping establish, as the tax assessor goes through and establishes values for property when citizens want to appeal that they think their valuation is too high. I assure you, they rarely appeal that it is too low. Hence, people don't typically want to pay more taxes than they need to, but this board requires some specialized knowledge, and Jay Connor has served multiple terms from the City of Auburn in this role, and Revenue Commissioner Olean Price asked that the City Council consider nominating him. You don't actually make the appointment to serve again, and while you have the ability to nominate three people, she's just requesting that you nominate one, and that be Jay Connor. This is a board, in terms of how it's appointed and so on, it doesn't really require any of the normal announcements and so on, because it is very unique in what it does, and she indicates Mr. Connor has served the city and the citizens very well in this role.
So, the process is that the City Council will nominate someone or some people, and the County Commission will affirm them? Is that who?
No, no, no. The Alabama Department of Revenue gets to choose one appointee.
Oh, okay, sure. If you said that earlier, I apologize.
No problem.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Crouch? Okay, do I have a nomination from the council?
Send it. For Jay Connor.
Okay, have a nomination of Jay Connor?
Second.
All right. Have a nomination and a second of Jay Connor. Are there any other nominations from the council? Okay, do we need to vote on this, then?
I'm gonna go ahead and vote, just to be sure.
So, all in favor of this nomination of Jay Connor to the Board of Equalization, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll deliver that to Ms. Price. Questions on the agenda?
Mayor, I did want to note that item 9A, there were some attachments that were not included in your packet, and I put one in front of each of you, and includes an application for the franchise agreement plus a map, and we've had those attachments all along. That is not the fault of the company seeking a franchise. They were not included in your packet, and so I wanted to make sure you had those this evening.
Any other questions on the agenda for Ms. Crouch? Do I have a move to adjourn?
Send it. Second.
All is adjourned. Okay. We call to order the City Council meeting for October 15th, 2019. Roll call, Caitlin.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Toby.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Anders.
Please stand for the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of sobers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. In the Committee of the Whole, we had three appointments to the tree commission. The City Council will appoint Seth Hunt, Jennifer Morris, and Donna Young later on in the agenda, and the City Council has nominated Jay Connor to the Board of Equalization that they will consider later. Under Mayor's comments tonight, I'll come down and make a special presentation, but I did want to make an announcement to Ms. Marguerite White. I have renominated her to the Housing Authority. She's done an outstanding job at Auburn Housing Authority. Her husband, Mr. Clima White, who was a successful and wonderful principal in our school system for many years, had served the Housing Authority until he passed away, and his widow has done an outstanding job, and I'm proud to reappoint her. All right, at this point in time, I'll come down for a special presentation. Okay, Mr. Van Daughtry, would you please come forward?
How you doing? I'm fine, sir. How you doing?
Doing fine. We have a special resolution tonight, and if there are any other veterans that would like to come join us, please feel welcome to come forward. Mr. Daughtry is a Purple Heart recipient, but certainly any other veterans, we are more than happy to have you step forward and join us.
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Thank you.
This is a resolution from the City Council, whereas the City of Auburn and its citizens have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served their country in the armed forces, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members of their families, to promote patriotism, to support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure that we never forget, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women of the City of Auburn that served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the City Council of the City of Auburn appreciates the sacrifice our Purple Heart recipients made while defending freedom and believe specific recognition be accorded them in appreciation of their courage to demonstrate the honor and the support that they have earned. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Auburn, Alabama hereby declares that the City of Auburn, as a Purple Heart city, honoring the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms of all Americans, adopted and approved by the City Council of the City of Auburn this 15th day of October. Do I have a motion?
No moves.
I have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Daughtry, I think you have something you'd like to share with us.
Well, yes, sir. First of all, presented the city with the Auburn City of Purple Heart, recognized it as a Purple Heart city, and I would like for y'all to have that. I have another one, I'll bring it to you. But also, we also have a resolution to the city from the Military of the Purple Heart Department of Alabama, certificate of appreciation. This certificate of appreciation is gratefully presented to Auburn, Alabama, War Eagle, as a Purple Heart city in the state of Alabama, in recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding service and assistance contributing to the advancement and the programs of the Military of the Purple Heart, having the advancement of service for veterans, active military personnel, and their families, at the heart of many of your community events, and believe me, you do have quite a few of them. Attests this day of the 15th of October, 2019, by Department Commander David Van Daughtry, present to the City of Auburn.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Episode, you want to say one more?
Yes. Go right ahead.
Sure. I'm never short for words. Men of Purple Heart recipient, I never intended to be one, but I am, and I've enjoyed it. The thing about it, we got a saying in the military, and I know some of you will be aware of it, if you talk the talk, you gotta walk the walk. There's a lot of us here that have made that walk, and we can talk that talk, but I do appreciate the City of Auburn having us here tonight, and sir, we thank you very much.
Thank you for everything. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Daughtry, and thank you for all of our veterans. It's a good segue into reminding everybody, we'll have a Veterans' Day ceremony coming up soon, and hopefully, weather permitting, it'll be out there at the Veterans Memorial. If not, last year, we had to come inside and do that, but we encourage you to take a little time on that day, if you can, and be with us. I believe it starts at 10 o'clock, Ms. Crouch. I think that's what time the ceremony starts, and we would love to have you. Under further Mayor's announcements, I just want to have a few reminders here. We have a Boards and Commissions Fair next week, and we encourage all of our community, if you are interested in serving on a Board or Commission, this will be an opportunity for you to meet the principals who are involved in those Boards of Commissions, ask questions, and see if it's a good fit for you, and understand when there might be openings coming up on their Boards in the future. This is certainly one of the initiatives from that task force that we created early, late last year, when we were first sworn in. It's just our way of doing more outreach to our citizens to let you know what's available and what's out there, and so you know kind of the flavor of each of these responsibilities. We've got some great events coming on, coming in this week in our city. The Pine Hill Land and Tour is Thursday night and Friday night over at the Pine Hill Memorial Cemetery, and I encourage you to attend. It's a very unusual event. You can learn about the history of Auburn, you can see the people, I guess people play in the people who many of our roads and streets and buildings are named for in and around town, and it just gives you a real value of the history of our community, and we certainly appreciate the Heritage Association and all their investment and work, and all the actors that'll be involved. Tip Off at Tumors is also Thursday night, what an unbelievable event. I think only Bruce Pearl could convince any of us to stop downtown and put a basketball court in the middle and bring a bunch of lights and have a lot of fun, but we're gonna do that Thursday night, and we're very excited about Tip Off at Tumors, and certainly, there's an opportunity for you to go to the Land and Tour and come by basketball practice. And then Orchestra in the Oaks is the next night downtown, where we'll have a concert in downtown Auburn, and we're very excited about that as well. The Lake Wilmore Open House is on the 30th, where you can see what the potential plans are for the Lake Wilmore Community Center and the grounds around Lake Wilmore. We encourage you, especially if you live in that area, to go and check that out, but this will be a community center that'll affect all of us that live in Auburn. If you will be raising children and being active, there's a good chance that you might spend some time out there once it's built and constructed, so it's your time now to go see about it and ask some questions, and maybe offer some ideas that we're not thinking about. And then certainly on Halloween night, we'll have downtown trick or treat. What a great event that our downtown merchants have championed for many, many years now, and we'll continue to do that again. So, those are some announcements from the Mayor, and I don't know if anybody else on the council has some other announcements that they would like to make.
Hey, I have a couple of announcements to make. At the last City Council meeting, I announced about the neighborhood cookout for the students, and that was supposed to be this Thursday night, but it's been canceled to October 22nd, which is next Tuesday, and it's gonna start at 6:00 PM, and I have a flyer here that Jack and I made, and it's free hamburgers and hot dogs, and just come out and join, and we want these neighbors to come and all the students in Ward 1 and Ward 2. Recommend everyone to come, and they want, he wanted me also to let the council know that you're welcome to come, and you're invited. And the other announcement I have, October 26th, which is a Saturday, Martin Luther King, the Northwest Auburn Task Force is sponsoring a fall festival, and people of all ages are invited to attend, and it's gonna be a lot of fun, a lot of food in the park. Bring your own tent and lawn chairs. It's gonna start at 11 o'clock AM, and it's gonna be all day. So, we invite everyone to come out and join in in these festivities.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, I have a Ward 2 meeting, will be on 29th of October, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the library, and we'll have a special guest, our Assistant City Manager will be there to discuss infrastructure projects in Ward 2.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? This is on our agenda a little bit later, but I just wanted to recognize and thank our economic development team. We had another industrial announcement yesterday from the Governor's Office, ID Plastics. They ultimately will be hiring up to 50 of our citizens and investing almost $10 million in our community, and it's been a great year. Our economic development team has done a great job this year. The success we've had has been awesome. Just last week, the Governor was in town with another announcement with Vinkelmann, and we're just proud for everything that they do to create the opportunities that we have to reinvest back into our community. So, Ms. Crouch, if you'd make sure the economic development team understands how much we appreciate them and thank them, and congratulations on this new announcement. Okay? All right. Anything else from the council? Okay, Auburn University Communications.
Tomorrow, Auburn University student leaders will be joined on campus by their counterparts from the University of Alabama and the University of Georgia for the annual Better Relations Day. This tradition spans over 70 years and is an effort for students to leave their rivalries on the field in order to come together and discuss issues facing all of our campuses, exchange ideas, and promote the best possible relationships amongst all three universities. The Eagles program, which stands for Education to Accomplish Growth in Life Experiences for Success, is Auburn's comprehensive transition program for students with intellectual disabilities. To continue its momentum, the program is hosting a one-day fundraising campaign, the 20K in a Day Challenge. The challenge started at noon today, and any gift given will be matched dollar for dollar until the program reaches its $20,000 goal. The reasoning behind this is because $20,000 would be enough to cover the cost of a student's housing for two years, pay for health and wellness training for all students, or provide a family with a substantial scholarship. Gifts can be made at aub.ie/givtoegles. SGA has recently worked with Auburn University Medical Clinic to advocate for a sexual assault nurse examiner program to be on campus. This program would allow students closer access to forensic exams following a situation of sexual violence. SGA is leading a fundraising event to provide funding for the program. Donations can be made at aub.ie/sane, or checks can be written out to the Auburn University Foundation with sane in the memo. After just one week of fundraising, students have already committed a substantial amount of the total need, which is to raise $36 by the spring semester. This money will go towards supplies, exam trainings for medical clinic nurses, initial medications, and provide three-year sustainability for the sane program. AUB clause, AUB's annual holiday photo fundraiser, will be held on November 9th, 10th, and 24th at the Jay and Susie Gooch Performing Arts Center. Registration is first come, first served, and will open online next Tuesday, October 22nd, at noon. That's it for the report, and War Eagle.
Hey, before you leave, speaking of rivalries, the City Council tonight, and I'll have to give Mayor Pro Tim Whitten credit for pointing us in this direction and reminding us, and she did a great job of that, but certainly, the Beat Bama food drive is ongoing, and we do want to win. So, tonight, the City Council is trying to do our part to help out, and we've brought you some cans that we hope you can take, and count towards our volume, so we can hopefully beat Bama this year.
Thank you so much. That'll be a great way to show off tomorrow at Better Relations Day. War Eagle.
War Eagle. Thank you.
Wrong, huh?
Yes.
I forgot to mention something, but I would say, the cookout is gonna be in the Meadows community, and it's on Grant Avenue, okay? It was gonna be on Williams Street, but now they're gonna do it in the Meadows, because they already got grills and tables and stuff set up.
True. Okay, good. Thank you, Connie, for that clarification. Okay. All right, at this point in time, is an opportunity for the citizens to come forward and speak to items that are on the agenda. These are only items on the agenda. We'll ask you to, we'll give you five minutes and ask that you give your name and address for the record. There are many things on our, a couple of things on our agenda tonight that do have public hearings attached to those, and we would ask that you leave those comments for that particular time, at that particular moment. If there's anything else on the agenda that you would like to speak to tonight, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move forward. City Managers, Communications.
Mayor, under City Managers, Communications, this evening, we had the announcement of two vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Terms begin December 1st, 2019, and end November 20th, 2023. Appointments will be made at the November 19th, 2019, meeting. There are three vacancies on the Building Board of Adjustments. Terms begin upon appointment and will end November 2nd, 2023. Those appointments will be made at the November 5th meeting, and then there's one vacancy on the Educational Building Authority. The term begins November 12th, 2019, and ends November 11th, 2025. Mayor, our next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone in the council like to see anything removed?
Yes.
Okay. Right. 8D6, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
8A, please. Minutes.
8A. Okay, Ms. Crouch, we'll take these in order here, so...
Item 8A are the minutes from the October 1st, 2019, meeting.
I'd like to ask that we have more detailed minutes in the future. In the minutes for this past meeting, for example, there were six separate instances of a statement that said, the council asked questions about the project, then the next paragraph was, the City Manager Boston answered all the council's questions. That was, like I said, six different iterations of that throughout the minutes, and I think it'd be beneficial if anyone wanted to go back at some point in time to actually follow, you know, what the deliberations were, if we add more detail to the minutes.
I will defer to the City Manager for a further answer, but as I understand, the minutes are just a synopsis of the meeting. There are audio and video recordings that detail everything, but they are not meant to be a transcript, verbatim, and actually, a lot of times when you read minutes, they don't even say anybody asked question. They just say, item was brought up, it was voted, it was moved on, and so that's something I'll be happy to check further with on the City Manager, but procedurally, we've been following for years, that they are a very succinct synopsis of what happened, and there are other records, should somebody want to go back and do an entire transcript of the meeting, those things are available in video and audio.
I agree. Recently, that's the case. You know, in the past, obviously, we did not have audio and video coverage, but I think, I'm not asking for a verbatim transcript, I'm thinking along the lines of, a question was asked about X, Y, Z, whatever it is, subject matter. Subject matter, right. And the other council members may disagree with me on this, but that's something that I would suggest and ask that the City Manager take a look at.
I'll be happy to discuss with him, and we will report back to you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council have a comment or thought on this? Okay, so, we've pulled it off the agenda, we still need to approve it, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 1st, 2019?
So moved. Second.
I'm gonna have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes carry.
Right, now, we need to go to 8D6. Item 8D6 is authorizing a contract with MNC Land Services LLC for repair of the stream bank at the Town Creek Park in the amount of $36,592.60.
Megan, the reason I asked that it be pulled was, I was absent from the packet meeting on Friday, and it's in Ward 6, and I just wouldn't, I'd appreciate if you could just give me a brief...
Yeah, and what I will do is, we have two folks here that will answer your question a little more thoroughly than I will, which is Becky Richardson, our Parks and Recreation Director, or our City Engineer, Allison Fraser.
We've had several cases of collapse of the bank of the creek, and it's in the area there where the dam is for the pond, and it's gotten progressively worse and has been, I don't know if you've noticed, roped off, where the public can't get too close to it, but we solicited proposals, and because it's been so dry, they've been obviously working on other projects, and it was hard to get someone to do the work, and we got a proposal that Ms. Fraser reviewed as an engineer, and she felt it was a good proposal, and we wanted to go ahead and get the work done while the weather was good for that, so of course, we've now instigated a new rainy season, so...
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Can I answer your questions? Do you have any other questions?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yes, did you say this was competitively bid, or you put it out for bid?
No, it was, we got proposals for it. It was under $50,000.
You get a public works bid law projects under $50,000 and meet that tilt, but we always typically get quotes unless it's a sole source vendor.
Okay, that was my, we had multiple sources to choose from. I guess that's a better question. Is that right?
We had previously gotten a proposal, but then they were not able to get to the work, and so we took this one.
The newspaper today said that this was the lowest bid for repairs. Is that accurate?
She said, just, because I know the microphone is off, it was the lowest, it was lower than the original quote that we had. We got two, and this is the lowest.
Yeah, there was like a half-page ad in yesterday's paper about a company that does the exact same thing, a local company. When you do a quick Google search, you come up with about, you know, 20 or so different companies. So, I just, just curious if this was simply, we only got two to start with, is that what we're saying, and one of them was non-responsive, and so we went with this? And so we went with.
Right, well, we had one that we were negotiating with. We went went to another one. With this type of work, and the city engineer can speak a little more to this if we need her to, but we have a very difficult time as we run into with our road projects and everything else. Little projects are hard to get people to build. It is hard to get qualified people to quote, and you can't just have anybody working on the stream bank. If it's not repaired properly, we have bigger issues on our hands, and so we are challenged by that. We are always open to getting multiple quotes. Our departments do that very well, but a lot of times, again, can't get people to quote on our work.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any anything else from the council? Okay. If not, I have a motion to approve this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right.
That leaves the remainder of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved.
Okay, Mayor, under ordinances this evening, item 9A is authorizing a franchise agreement with Point Broadband of Opalika LLC for cable services. Unanimous consent is necessary. A public hearing is required. And then I just wanted to let you know that we do have representatives here should you have questions, and our staff is also available to answer any questions you may have.
Motion?
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Mayor, we have a public hearing.
Yeah. So we have a motion in a second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? All right, seeing none, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to come forward, please share your name and address to the council. Anyone? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the council?
Yes, we have a map of their service area, and if we could have the representatives talk about the areas they chose, and there's some key areas that fall under wards two and three on the far north end of the city limits that are not shown here, that do not have coverage. And so and it ties into the Opalika side, which is, I thought, one of the benefits of having this franchise agreement.
Yeah, sure. So we've been in talks with the city.
Can you state your name and address for the record? Sorry, just so.
No, of course, thank you.
Keep you up.
Yeah, my name's Chad Walker, General Counsel, Point Broadband. Appreciate the question. So we've been engaged, we've been conversations with the city for a while, and those conversations have been broad-reaching on which areas of the city that the city would like us to look at. So I don't view that conversation as closed by this hearing and this application. So whatever the questions are, I know this is a public forum, but we'll sit down with anybody anytime and talk about our stance, what our plans are for the city. We will first, we've kept a database of customers that have called us on the city side. It's well-known that the city of Opalika built the system. We purchased it when the city of Opalika had it. They couldn't serve outside of their city. We're not bound that way. So a lot of the people that have called us are just right on the other side of the Opalika. When the city asked us for that map, they were they were it was the content that asked us what areas will we focus on looking to build first, so that's what we provided the map. But that's not that's not the scope of our interest or a limitation of our interest. That's that's just a starting point of our conversation.
Have an idea of tonight, what kind of what the overall interest is? City coverage, full coverage, city limits?
No, we're going to take a very cautious gradual approach, right? So so we have a map, which I think some of the information actually came from the city, calls the city had, and we'll go to the people that have called us first, and and we'll expand from there. So no, we're not trying to limit our scope, nor are we trying to express grandiose plans, and there'll be construction trucks rolling around. That's not we're just going to take the calls and grow, see what happens, and build upon our success.
I know there was some conversation about expanding to areas that we do not have coverage, and I think Mayor Pro Tim addressed that. That's a that's a definite need in our area, and I know that that would probably require some capital investment from your company. Is that in in the game plan at some point?
Well, we need to look at the actual information, what the addresses are, and do the engineering and the construction plan. So we'll meet with anybody on the city council, but we just met Allison, and we worked with Penny before. If normally what we do is sit down with Allison, sit down with the city administration, and take all of that information at one time and then respond. But that we will, we are open to the dialogue and looking at it, and we'll be very transparent in how we look at that process.
And you'll be serving both corporate and residential customers, is that correct?
We do. We do provide residential and business service, correct?
Same quality of the one gig, I mean, the same, everything service-wise.
It's world-class quality service, world-class customer support, no question.
Any other questions for Mr. Walker while he's up here?
I'd just like you to be sure to include in your in your potential areas, the the areas north of 280, along Heath Road, all that area. I know I've had a lot of constituents that live along there that are reliant on satellite-only delivery to for internet services and things.
We're happy to take a look at it, and if you want, we can follow up with with you. And the more information we get, specific addresses, the easier it is for us to take a look at.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Yeah. Thank you, Chad.
Let me ask one more question. I'm sorry, just about because this is somewhat limited in scope as what we're looking at. It looks like Phase One is going to be pretty limited to my ward around the mall, which is going to be, and it looks to be pretty corporate, I think, in that area, some residential. And then we got a pretty good stretch here up 280. Can you sit here? I'm sorry.
Do you want some context for that part of the?
No, no, no. I mean, sure, if you want to provide it, but my really, my overall question is, what is what is Phase Three? I mean.
We don't have Phase One, Two, Three, and Four, right? That that.
I'm just going to base off what's been provided.
Right. So we have, again, we bought the system from Opalika. We have a very close relationship with the medical community, and there are a lot of those customers along that route, and we had promised to provide service to those customers as quickly as we could.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council, comments? We have a motion in a second, so.
Real quick, Megan, this is an eight-year agreement, franchise agreement, is that right?
I will have, I think it is, Greg, my answer, it's not one of the few things on this agenda I did not formulate, but the answer is yes.
It's an eight-year, so we would renew it every eight years?
That's incorrect, because Bill, we're all in franchise, it's come up all at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
And now we have a number of planning items. The first one is item 9B1, a request for annexation by Catherine and David Manley for approximately 1.03 acres located at 505 Lee Road 110. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion, second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Any questions?
Yes, I have some questions.
Yep.
Under public safety, talked about fire suppression activities to be affected by travel distances and capabilities of the water system. It's currently serviced by, looks like Beauregard Water, is that right? And it says the nearest fire hydrant is 2,000 feet away. Is Auburn permitted to tap into another water district's fire hydrants if necessary?
I would believe that anytime you're fighting a fire, you can tie into any ones, but there are some challenges sometimes in the Beauregard area with some pressures, and that's probably why that comment was made. Not just distance, but also pressures.
Okay. So not hard and fast whether we have the ability to provide fire support for that property. Is that accurate?
Forrest, you want to talk about it's the standard comment that fire makes?
Yeah, I mean, when when we annex out in these areas, the fire department just likes to make it clear that they may not be able to get there as quickly as they can to places that are closer into the core, and so they just they like to go on the record that, you know, annexer beware, if you will.
And Forrest, would you say that this these citizens are totally aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's cited in the actual ordinance itself, and then they're made aware of it in a number of different ways.
Thanks, Megan. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. Caitlin?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Toby? Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B2 is a request for annexation by Gene Peterson and Victor Peterson for approximately 3.3 acres located at 2452 Lee Road 159, also known as Wrightsmill Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, and unanimous consent is necessary.
And use the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion, second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, are there any questions?
I do have a question. How does how do they get to this property? Do they have to cross over?
I believe they actually have an easement to Wrightsmill Road.
Okay.
Go down a dirt road, it's there on the right, dirt portion.
Okay. It looks like it is the dirt road, Lee Road 159?
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like it crosses over the State Parks property.
Close it down now. It's the dead end down there.
Oh, okay.
I know it very well because I flipped my first vehicle right in front of that house.
I remember that, too.
My daddy hadn't let me forget it yet.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
That needs to be in the minutes.
Make sure that's in the minutes, Caitlin, or detail. Okay. All right. Caitlin?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9C1 includes various zoning ordinance text amendments to Articles 4, 5, 8, and 9 for the purpose of integrating street classifications from the Engineering Design and Construction Manual with the corridor overlay area regulations. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council on this issue, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions in the council? Seeing none, Caitlin?
Toby?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9C2 is a request from David Kahn on behalf of Green River Real Estate Investment LLC to rezone approximately 3.18 acres from rural to comprehensive development district for property located at 2826 Cox Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning. Please don't confuse this with the conditional use, which you will not see just yet. That comes later in November. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required. I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. We have a motion, second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Lula Wigam Maribel, and I'm standing here in opposition to the rezoning of this particular property. Approximately two years and eight months ago, I stood here voicing the same opposition, and so now we're here again. And at the City Planning Commission, someone asked, why are we here again? Because it was denied in 2017. What has changed? The only thing that I can see is that things have gotten worse for the homeowners and the residents residents in this area. I, for one, I live next door to this property, and I'm very much opposed to having a property next door to me when I'm in a residential house, having a property built next door to me. That's one thing. Secondly, what has gotten worse is that the traffic conditions have gotten much, much worse on Cox Road, all the way down from Y Road to where this property exists. The traffic is backed up daily, and in particular during the time when the school buses are coming and bringing the small children, and the bus stops right on the corner of my property. And the traffic is backed up in front of the school bus and behind the school bus, and it's very, very difficult to get those children off the bus and into their parents' arms. So I see it as a public safety issue, not just for myself, but for the citizens that live on Cox Road, and for the traffic that comes through there daily, which has increased I also feel that it's somewhat unfair to have a residential property next door to a commercial property without any benefit to the person that's living in the residence, because the property value has an opportunity not to increase, but to decrease the value of the property. So what are we doing? What are we looking at? Have we really thought this through? Have we really thought about? Has anybody ever even been on Cox Road during a traffic, heavy traffic hour? And not have don't have a football game. It starts Thursday afternoon, and the traffic gets heavier and heavier from Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and you can barely get through, not not count the rush hours as well. I see some people are nodding, yes, they've been on Cox Road. I would invite you to take a look, and let's take a really good look, and let's be sensitive to the safety issues of the residents that live in those areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would be next?
Again, you can put my face on the name now. I'm Dr. Steve Hammack. Live at 2071 Fieldview Drive in the community we're talking about. I had the pleasure of talking to Dr., not the Mayor Anders, I'm a give you a doctorate too, and also.
Taught a lot of things, but not a doctor, but that's okay.
Okay. But you don't play well on TV. And of course Bob Parsons is glad to talk to you as well. Yes, I'm also opposed to it. I appreciate the time you took with me to, with candor to tell me politely, say the side of this. And I think, I think it's a reasonably good side. Basically what you say is, you know, there's a commercial property that's already going over here. In fairness, we should make Mr. Kahn's property the same. Let's be fair to Mr. Kahn. Okay. I understand in principle the idea of fairness. But fairness is a two-sided coin. And are we really being fair to him and to us? And I think it requires me to tell you a few things about where we stand in terms of fairness to us. This started, really, last summer. I've always enjoyed keeping up with the city council. I used to be a reporter, by the way, for WRBL Television. I covered you guys for years. Not you specifically. But it, but it gave me a good practice to keep up with what was going on in my area. And I always do that. And last summer, there was an open house. So I came to that and talked to Logan Kip at that time of the Planning Commission. He was very polite, telling me, he showed me the maps. And I asked him, Logan, is there going to be anything in our area that he's interested in? And he said, no. He said, right now, we're playing catch-up downtown. We're trying to expand downtown. We're looking at the areas around the soccer field to the north view. And, you know, and that's where the expansion has been. And so I said, okay. Went back, went back to the house. Feeling pretty good about things. There was no issues going on there. Two months later, I got a phone call from a neighbor. And he says, there's this property up here that's been bought and they want to turn it into commercial property. And it caught us flat-footed, you know, where did this come from? And frankly, we didn't know. So I went to a meeting with Mr. Kahn. He was very polite. He answered all the, all the questions he could. And it left us still with where did this come from? How did this happen? And so I started doing research. I'm, I'm a professional writer. I do research for a living. So I started looking into the city council's records. It mentioned in the original submission by Mr. Kahn that this was going to be for industrial support. And I was like, what is that? I'd never heard that term before. And so I started looking at that. And I found out there was this thing called the Exit 50 study. And I said, what's that? I'd never heard of it either. I asked Councilmember Dawson, I said, what is, what is the Exit 50 study? He says, I don't know. He'd never heard of it. So I had to do several days of research because the time for the Planning Commission was coming. And I said, well, Cal, I need to find out. So I did. It was, I don't know if you know, I'm gonna tell you. The Exit 50 study was used to augment the Comp 30 Plan from 2011. This was done back in 2014. And it was done by, principally, I think by Tyler Caldwell. And he said at the time, well, let's add a designator to these lands called industrial support that would allow for things like Mr. Kahn's business to go in. Well, nobody told us. I, I'd never seen the Exit 50 study. I looked for it. It's not available publicly. You can't read it. Nobody informed us of this ruling had been done. We had no idea. So we just blissfully went on with our lives. And all of a sudden, this was thrust upon us. I went to intense study to find out, you know, what, what Mr. Kahn's business was. We're not going to go into that today. I don't, I understand that. But at the same time, it led me to understand the nature of what had been done with the zoning. And one thing, sir, you told me the last time we got before us in 2017 was that, well, you've had plenty of time to study these matters. You, you, you've had lots of time already. You know, you're going to be forced out eventually. Yeah, we are. But I would argue that we were not informed. We were not given time to be, to make an informed decision on these things. And if my neighbor who moved here in the last few years, who is here tonight, had known that there could be a business like Mr. Kahn's coming into that place, would he have moved here? Probably not. I mean, if, if you knew that your neighborhood could have a warehouse that would end up going to have things that could hurt your kids, would you want to move there? No, you wouldn't. But he was never given that opportunity. His realtor didn't know about it. I don't know that Logan Kip, the Planning Commission, knew about it. So my question, which you may be able to ask yourselves, who didn't know? And evidently, some people knew. Mr., you know, our friend, Mr. Kahn knew and took advantage of the situation. That's his business. He's an honest businessman. He's got a right to do what he wants to. But was it fair to people here who moved to our neighborhood to have not told us what was going on? Why were we left flat-footed? Why are we not given the opportunity to know the full story before all this? I would never have found out if I hadn't spent like a full week just, just poring through documents, doing cross-referencing, finding out. And when I did, it hit me like a ton of bricks. And I'm like, and I'll add one more thing. When they moved, when they decided to put the road to the Technology Park West, they were, they were talking about moving it through our land first. They tried to buy our land and came five different times. And Riley Bryce, who I personally like, by the way, he's a nice guy, he told us that, yes, this land will eventually be going commercial. But he didn't tell us anything besides that. He didn't say, well, there's an Exit 50 plan now that's got an industrial support designator that, you know, we can put, you know, whatever this is going to be up there that's going to be damaging to, to your property or to your lives. Nobody told us that. And frankly, that's not fair. And that's what I want to say. There's two sides of this. But was it fair to Mr. Kahn either to put him in this situation, which is frankly an awkward one, and I feel for him? But was it a fair thing that was done? And I think, I think each of you needs to ask that question. Was it really fair? I don't think it was. And it wasn't fair to, to the people of our neighborhood, and it wasn't really fair to this whole situation. Was it your fault? No. I'm not, I'm not looking to place blame. I think this was a failure of the system because I would never have known it if I hadn't have done some intense research to figure out what was going on. And it took me a long time. But why, why did, why would it have to be? Why wasn't I informed? Why, why wasn't the people who bought houses in our neighborhood informed that this was going to happen this way? And so I think there is a higher standard of fairness going on here that is not being considered. And I would ask you to consider it when you vote. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do what? No, you're, you're fine. We got you. Okay. Who would be next? Lindberg. Mr. Jackson, let this lady, she was up before you were. Yeah, she, she stood up.
You don't have eyes in the back.
Okay, that's fine. That's, that's why we're here to help you.
My name is Amy Langford, and I reside at 2021 Fieldview Drive. I grew up here in Auburn, as well as my parents and grandparents. I've seen a lot of growth in Auburn. I wanted to start off by stating the obvious, that our home is indeed-
Hold on just one second, Amy. Can we get that door closed? Thank you. Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
You're fine. It's indeed zoned rule at the, at the moment. I just wanted to jot down some things to talk about. One was rule. Just, I feel like that meaning's important. It just talks about like a district intended to protect and preserve areas in Auburn which are presently rural or agricultural in character and use. This is important zoning definition because it does in fact show that we are some of the fortunate few in Auburn that do have some acreage. It means a lot to us and has enabled us to show our five children to look outside their windows and see land, to ride around on their four-wheelers, to see nature. So many positive things that are going outside that some of our kids don't get to see if they're in a more tight neighborhood. That is why we bought our home. If you rezone this residential piece of property that was purchased to CDD, it is causing the adjoining residential properties to suffer not only a financial hardship, but an emotional hardship as well. As for my home, my family was forced into an 18-month lawsuit to purchase our home, costing us a lot of money. This was only resolved a little over a year ago. We probably wouldn't have made those choices had we known what was going to be put into this property that was actually our neighbors at the time. I feel that we have been put into a situation to be reactive instead of being given the opportunity to be proactive and move forward in a positive way. We have not been given a timeline because I don't think there really is a clear-cut timeline. But I feel like we need to be given the time to find a safe and fair solution for all of us. I feel that we, the owners of the properties adjoining Mr. Kahn's residential piece of property that he bought, again, he, you know, knew it was a residential piece of property, that our needs should come first. We are the current families living there. We have invested time and money into our homes and we love our homes. Our children love their home, and this negatively affects us in so many ways if it is passed. In the zoning ordinance, Article 1, Section 101, legislative intent states that this ordinance contains performance criteria intended to ensure that neighbors are protected from adverse impacts, that the purpose of this ordinance is the promotion of the health, safety, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Auburn in many ways. One states by protecting landowners from adverse impacts of adjoining developments. I just wanted to touch base on that because I feel like it's hard to understand unless you're in our situation, living in our homes. And, you know, our kids are scared and they don't know exactly what's going on. And, you know, just, we have five children in Auburn City Schools. And, you know, if you move one row down, you're in a totally different school district. So we've actually had to keep, you know, keep our son at a private school just to keep him in one school until this is all resolved. So I hope that it all gets resolved shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. All right. Mr. Jackson?
Lindberg V. Jackson, 8154 North College. Friend of little Maribel here. Her husband and I, and what's happened and what's changed since 2017? Of course, a lot of things have changed. Five of you guys have changed. But just a few weeks ago, I stood before you concerning a property that is not contiguous, but is catticorned of this property, about 40 acres. And it's called Windover Farms Mobile Home Park. It's not in the city. It's in the planning jurisdiction. True enough. As Mrs. Maribel stated, traffic is very heavy. The residents are fixed. They're in place in that particular community. This property very well could go industrial. Could come into Auburn, might stay in the county. I spoke to the Lee County Commissioners tonight. And what's also changed is the fact that Exit 50 leads into our industrial park. It's now complete. Any developers or entrepreneurs, anybody that's looking to be in an opportunity zone, opportunity zone, that's the key word. It's in a opportunity zone, which is designated by the state for tax shelter for the people that develop in that particular area. We have over 40 residents that are being asked to move. None has been evicted officially yet. We're waiting for the eviction notices. Once that happens, those property owners will have to do something legally to protect their lifestyle. Their kids are moving, the gentleman is not offering any money for these people to be moved. So there's a hardship at stake here. The hardship is, most people that live there, some of them don't have that kind of money to just up and move. So that opportunity zone says, and at the state level, that you can't displace nor cause a hardship on the residents. And moving into that zone and taking advantage of the tax shelters, the tax breaks. If they come to Auburn, you guys will be confronted with that. If they stay in the county, Lee County would be confronted with that. But surely, this opportunity zone is going to change all of these people's life and lifestyles. And another way that we have addressed this issue in Northwest Auburn, you got something on the agenda, and we'll talk about that later, is that gentification is spelled out. And the previous council, before you guys, mayor, you heard me say, what's gentification? Big brother, little brother. I gave you that scenario. How big brother brings in all of his friends to little brother's room and plays and takes away his game. That's what's happening out there. Big brother is moving in. He's moving in because it's an opportunity zone because of Exit 50 being such an advantageous exit into Auburn. People are going to be misplaced. I think you need to consider the people. What's changed? Why did the previous council turn it down? I think you need to look at that before you take your votes tonight. Because this is gentification in its rawest, purest form for those people out there. Thank you.
Who would be next?
My name is Adam Ficken. I live at 2060 Fieldview Drive. Our property, my wife, my family and I, we have two small children, ages three and two. We adjoin the far western boundary of the property that is being proposed for rezoning tonight. I just come to you with the heart of a father who wants to take care of his children and ensure that their well-being is looked after and speak up for them. I don't see a business going into my backyard as something that would be beneficial for us at this time. I certainly want to do my best long-term for the city. And I've said in the email that I've written to all of you that we're willing to work with you, the city. If you're serious about having this as industrial support space, then my thought is, is that you could be serious about, about building an industrial support park. You build industrial parks. So as opposed to just allowing one small business to kind of come in and, and push us out of the way and force us to deal with some things that we really don't want to, I think a better solution would be if we worked together to produce a plan that would allow the homeowners to get out of the way, so to speak, of the corporate development train. And that would allow Mr. Kahn to benefit as well. So if you're not able or you're not willing to do that at this time, I believe the best option before we deny it is to say no to the rezoning and protect us, the residents who do call this area home. I think Mr. Kahn and Mr. Williams have more flexible options at their disposal to open a business or acquire property or rent space. It's much more easily attainable than it would be for us as homeowners to live with the consequences of the decision or pick up and move. It's not something that's easily done just to uproot your family. And so I'm asking you tonight just to use wisdom, knowing that we can do something better together in the long-term, as opposed to taking a short-sighted, in my opinion, a very selfish plan that's being brought before you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Travis Wisdom, and I own the Wisdom Firm located at 2353 Bent Creek Road in Auburn. I'm before you tonight on behalf of David Kahn. It is pronounced Kahn, by the way, as the applicant for the rezoning. Mr. Kahn's property is surrounded on four sides, obviously. And two of the homes, had people speak before you, are residences, and they're behind him. To the south, he has a neighbor where this council did, or granted, the identical request he's making here. They were rural. They're adjoining him. They asked this council to make them CDD. The council did so. And then across the street to the east, we all know we have the Auburn Industrial Park. So Mr. Kahn's property, I want to say, is located on Cox Road. I bring that up because Cox Road is in front of Mr. Kahn's property, four lanes. And a block down, it goes into five lanes. And then three blocks down, it hits our biggest interstate in this part of the state. Certainly, this council is not responsible for Exit 50. That would fall on the shoulders of the Alabama Department of Transportation. That came, that changed this neighborhood drastically. There are automobiles, as Ms. Maribel pointed out, that travel this road frequently. Everybody wants access to the interstate. That's very normal. The industrial park has been there for a long, long time. It is within a football-throwing distance of the residences that surround Mr. Kahn's property. So giving you the picture of where the property is and what it's located next to, the neighborhood is changing. And I'm not unsympathetic to those who spoke before you tonight. But we're in a situation where Mr. Kahn is a citizen of this city. He has a small business. He's the little guy here. And we have residents who are saying, we don't want his business here. The reason I think his business should go here, or the reasons are as follows. First, we are talking about less than half a mile from an interstate exit and less than 15 yards from the Auburn Industrial Park. This maybe once was a rural neighborhood. Chief Dawson's got land that backs up to the industrial park. I know he probably isn't a big fan of that, but it's there. And it's part of who Auburn is. We've got a great IDB that is out there attracting new businesses to come create jobs here in the city. That's for a reason. It builds our tax base. It funds our schools. It helps build public roads. We want that. Is it uncomfortable to live by? Is it uncomfortable to live by? Absolutely. I wouldn't want it. I didn't choose where the Auburn Industrial Park went, but that's where it is. I want to differentiate, though, what Mr. Can's doing. He's erecting an office building, a showroom, and a warehouse on his property. So the idea that what he's doing somehow endangers the lifestyle of the three residents that touch his property really isn't a reasonable argument. He's going to double the buffer that's required of him by the city. He's going to have a solid fence that surrounds his property. The property, which I think you've seen a rendering of in your packets, is going to be a well-built, good-looking structure. He's going to have twenty-four-hour security there. His business, unlike the industrial park just across the street, is an eight-to-five business.
Hey, Travis, this is a zoning discussion tonight.
Right.
What you're saying really is more appropriate at the conditional use.
Well, I'm not talking about how he's using it. I'm talking about the nuisance factor, Mayor.
Okay.
So because it's eight-to-five, there's not going to be anything that affects the lifestyle of these folks. There's not going to be late-night deliveries. There's not going to be increased traffic during hours where people are using their residence. What his property will go to is a use that's used daytime only. The CDD zoning is appropriate because the comp plan has dictated that this area will become just that, a CDD area by the year 2030. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this rezoning request. It was their opinion unanimously that this is the appropriate use for the property and the appropriate zoning. As I mentioned already, the adjoining neighbor, his next-door neighbor that orders his property, achieved this very same zoning two years ago. His is the next request in line, and it's appropriate for this area. The so-called residential area, this is designated rural right now. Certainly, that it could be used as a residence. But it also has other uses that are allowed in that zone. This zoning is not going to interfere with the rural zoning of the parties who will be left on the property. Finally, I want to point out that the city staff has recommended approval of this rezoning request. It's what really this entire area is going to move to. And we shouldn't restrict one business owner from getting his rezoning request granted when we've just given it to the adjoining business owner, the very same request. You're sort of picking and choosing there and saying, "Well, we like this guy and his request. The same identical request is being made here. We don't like him." So, yeah, I know we're not talking about you, Smear, but I just wanted to point out, he's not doing anything that, in his CDD zoning, that would interrupt anyone's daily life in this area. I'm open for any questions, if anybody has any.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Wisdom? Okay.
Thanks.
Who would be next?
Good evening. My name is Clay Langford. I live at twenty-two twenty-one Fieldview Drive. I want to bring up the fact, something Ms. Maribel talked about, and it was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting, is that I asked the question to begin the meeting, is what has changed since we fought this two years ago and you guys voted it down? What has changed? And the answer I got was, nothing has changed, or we don't know what's changed. Everything is pretty much still status quo. And none of us have been told anything that has been changed that would warrant the council voting yes on this. I want to say that my wife and five children moved out there in 2015, and we love being out there. Mr. Can purchased the property a couple of years ago. And I understand he wants to build a business. And his lawyer so eloquently put out, pointed out that there is a lot on the corner that was on CDD. It is not the same because it was a vacant lot. There wasn't residents there. You know, Mr. Khan could have very well purchased that lot. You know, maybe it was because that lot was $600,000 and the home he purchased was $250,000. And I throw those numbers out because those numbers are important toward us. I don't think anyone should be discriminated against. I think that to allow Mr. Khan to come in and effectively purchase a home and then go in the back door and say, "Well, hey, I want to make this a business now," I don't think it's right. And I get a lot of calls from realtors. "Hey, I'm so-and-so from, you know, XYZ Realty Company. We would like to sell your property. Would you like to sell it?" "Well, no, I don't want to sell it. I've got almost five acres in town and this very attractive property." I have reached out to realtors and, since this has come about and, you know, ask, "Hey, what if this business does get built in our backyard? What happens then?" Well, it effectively destroys our value of our homes that we've worked hard and, you know, added on. We keep a nice neighborhood. I don't think any of you guys up there would want, you know, to have your home values destroyed. I mean, who would? So I would ask each of you to vote no based off the fact that it's not... I wouldn't say it was adequate to allow one person to take value and leave the rest of us out in the cold, if that makes sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who will be next? Anyone? Those are gentlemen's... Did you want to speak, sir? Okay. Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor, this property happens to be on Ward Eight. And I want to first say Mr. Can has been over backwards to put a plan together to build on it. And I appreciate him taking time to meet with the citizens out there. And I appreciate his attitude. And Mr. Wisdom is always eloquent when he speaks, and I appreciate that. That being said, there's no way I can support rezoning this to commercial with affecting the families like it will. Ms. Maribel, her husband, moved there in 1980. I was a young man. And Mr. Maribel, very hard-working individual, worked hard. And he has the nicest, they have the nicest place on the entire road. She's a widow woman now, lives there. Keeps the yard immaculate, has a very nice home. And it's something we can be proud of for visitors coming into Auburn to see. Took a lot of hard work to get it that way. Clay and Adam live back in there behind it. Clay, like he said, has five children who are often out playing in the house. Adam's wife has two small children. She pushes them quite regularly in a stroller up and down the street. He had a very large dog that wanted to eat me up several times when I would walk down the street. But it's just... And I voted for the corner down there to be commercial because it was a corner of the street on the corporate. And there was nothing on the corner, nothing on their property at the time. Frankly, it was a run-down barn. Frankly, I think the corner would be more appropriate for something like that. And I'm normally big on property owners' rights. But I just, given, knowing these people like I do, knowing the area and neighborhood, I really, I just can't support the rezoning of this property right now to a commercial. I do feel like, however, in the near future, that it'd become more lucrative for everybody out there. I really, if the economy keeps going up, that's going to be a hot piece of property out there. And I know you've done a lot of work, Mr. Can, to get where you're at now. And I appreciate that, I really do. But I just can, in all good conscience, support these good people having that type of warehouse by there in their backyard.
Tom, anyone else on the council?
Yes, I want to say something. I always think that the resident needs should always come first. And if anybody understands development in our neighborhood, I am one of the people that understands when something comes into the neighborhood and unknowingly, because I've experienced it in my own neighborhood. And to destroy people, families, livelihood, land, value, I just think it's unfair. So to just continue to bring in, maybe okay with some, but it's not okay with other people. So I do not support rezoning. And that is what we're talking about, zoning, right? Rezoning the area. So I'm not in support of this.
Go ahead.
I wonder if you or Forrest could give us a broader picture of this particular area as it's positioned in the whole Comp 2030 vision of our city's growth?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Once we knew about the interchange and how that would change that area, not knowing the timing of it, but knowing that that would set the stage for dramatic change, we recognized the need to go in and comprehensive plan for that change, which is the Exit Fifty study that was referred to. It was done back in 2014. That went before the Planning Commission. That was approved by the Planning Commission. There was a public hearing. It wasn't a secret. And we recognized there would be industrial growth out there. And we recognized there would need to be support uses to support that industrial growth. And so we provided for that and kind of wrapped that around. What we haven't talked about, but I think it's important to mention, is that about two-thirds of that study area is still in the unincorporated county, including property that abuts, the properties that we're talking about tonight, which means on those properties, anybody can build anything they want, whenever they want. And so what we wanted to do was get ahead of that, plan for that area with the expectation that at some point, folks would also want to bring that property in for developmental purposes.
Ms. Whitten?
Forrest answered one of the questions. But I do recall, two years ago, when we had this in front of us, we stated it wasn't time and that in probably a couple of years, it would be time. And so fast forward a couple of years, we are here. And this is a zoning request. And we have already demonstrated that we have supported the future land use plan by rezoning the property adjacent to this applicant's property to CDD. So I don't know how we can justify denying this applicant's request for the zoning. The use is a totally different scenario, and it's a whole totally different application and process and would come before us later. But tonight, we're here to talk about zoning. And a zone is... We have demonstrated just recently that we support the land use, the future land use of this area. And what has changed is two years later. And that's why I would be in support of changing or rezoning this to CDD.
Anyone else on the council?
I believe health, welfare, and safety are the overriding things that we should be considering. And obviously, the welfare of our residents is of utmost importance. And two years have passed. I assume that the rationale for denying it two years ago was similar to the requests we've had tonight to deny it. I don't see where anything has changed, other than time. If it wasn't time for it two years ago, I still don't think it's time for it. I strongly oppose the rezoning.
Anyone else? Anyone?
Well, I'll chime in. You know, and I appreciate the residents of the area and Adam. And I had an opportunity to speak this afternoon. And I hope he understood that I was incredibly sincere, you know, in my empathy going through a similar situation with a family home and a good old Dollar General coming in next door and, you know, blocking out a sunset on a family farm. So I understand, you know, exactly what they're going through and understand the, I hope they understand, the weight with which we have to bear this decision, you know, in that light. But I do default to our plan. You know, I think everyone seems to be on the same page that ultimately, this is going to be a commercial corridor off of a brand-new interstate exit and almost a plea for time to assemble other properties and make a push for their own commercial future use. And so to withhold the current applicant's ability to do just the same just because we're waiting when his next-door neighbor's already been granted the use, you know, in a line, or in line with our land use plan just seems to be picking and choosing. And I just don't think that's a great precedent. So I will be supporting the use change, excuse me, the zoning change, this before us tonight.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else on the council, anything they'd like to say?
Before we vote, I just, I want the members of this neighborhood, Ms. Maribel and Steve and Amy and Adam and Clay, to know that the way y'all have conducted yourself has been first class. And y'all have been so passionate about your neighborhood. And I appreciate, I've talked, I think I've talked to every one of you on the telephone and almost all of you. And you've handled yourself appropriately here tonight as well. So thank you for conducting yourself in that manner. This is a very, very difficult decision. I told my wife this afternoon, I'm not so sure this isn't one of the toughest decisions I've ever made since I've been either been on the council and certainly since I've become the mayor. I will support the rezoning tonight, and I don't do that lightly. It was a very difficult decision for me to make. But I do feel like in the best interest of our community, moving forward, as we move forward with the Exit Fifty area out there and all the uses that'll be coming out there, that this will be appropriate in the future. And certainly, I don't want anybody to be hurt by this. And as we move forward, if this were to pass with a conditional use, I'd expect to hold firm to the protections that everybody should be afforded if a business were to go in here. And you have my word that I'll be very diligent in working on that if that's where we end up after tonight.
All right. Anybody else? All right, so we have a motion and a second. So Caitlin, go ahead.
Yes. Smith?
I have to recuse myself from this vote.
Taylor?
No.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson?
No, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
No, ma'am.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item nine C three is a request from Brett Basquin on behalf of East Glen Investment Properties LLC to amend the planned development district designation on thirty-point-six-two acres known as Sanford Village PDD Amendment Assisted Living. The property is located at the southwestern corner of East Sanford Avenue and East Glen Avenue. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required. I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, Caitlin?
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Dawson? Parsons?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Mayor, under resolutions, this item ten A one is a request by Brett Basquin on behalf of East Glen Investment Properties LLC for conditional use approval of an institutional use assisted living for property located at the terminus of Sanford Village Court in the Comprehensive Development District with an overlay of planned development district. The Planning Commission recommended approval with an eight-to-one vote, and a public hearing is required. I'll go for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. At this point in time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to... If you'd like to address the council, please come forward, give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions for the city manager, any comments? Seeing none, this is a resolution, so we'll do this by voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a request by Robert Oglesby on behalf of Three J's Properties, LLC, for conditional use approval for a recreational rental dwelling use, also known as an RV park, for property located at 341 Willis Turk Road in the Rural Zoning District. The Planning Commission recommended approval with a five-to-one vote. A public hearing is required.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. At this point in time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments? City manager?
I have a comment, it might be a question, but, um, this would be an RV park. Do we have, um, any additional RV parks that are within the city limits?
Yes, we have several of them. Um, the owner of one is sitting in the front row. Uh, you have, you have, um, Auburn RV Park, and then you also have, um, Forrest, you have at Wire Road and, and, um, Webster Road?
Eagles Landing.
Eagles Landing. Thank you, Mr. Sparrow. Yes, Eagles Landing at Wire Road and Webster Road, that are in the city limits. There are a number of RV parks that, that sit adjacent to the city limits. Um, and then, there is one more, but I, the one Thomas adjacent from Mathenhold's Place that's got the little buildings, is that in the city limits?
That's county.
Yes, legends. Apologize. There's quite kind of extensive regulations, and Forrest can get into that, to go into when you actually have an RV park in the city limits, about paving things and about buildings and other things. It's not, um, it's not necessarily a, a simple process of just put an RV park. They have some pretty strict requirements.
Is that road, Lee Road 57, can it, can it have the traffic of, I mean, the movement in and out of those?
It's, it's fairly, the development on, that actually has access to Willis Turk at this location is fairly sparse. A good portion of the property in the surrounding areas in the county. Um, the, the big lot that you see behind this use on the Prox map that's in the county, that's actually a trailer park. The, the use, because of the, because of it being rural in nature and then having a lot of lots in the county, there's, uh, all kinds of different uses, and, um, there's some, some single trailers that are in the county. There's obviously the bigger trailer park, and you've got, you've got some RV parks in the larger surrounding area.
Any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion in a second. We'll do this once again by voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. One opposition. Motion carries.
Item 10A3 is a request by Felix Legasi on behalf of Legasi Construction for conditional use approval of a performance residential development, two academic detached dwelling units for property located at 321 and 325 Canton Avenue, in the Neighborhood Redevelopment Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. A public hearing is required.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll open this up for a public hearing. If you'd like to address the council on this, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Um, hi, I'm Elizabeth Hill. I live at 274 Bragg Avenue. And I'm not going to go through the history and the struggle that has been through this neighborhood with decisions that have been made by this council and the planning department that have gotten us where we are tonight. And I've been very grieved by some of the decisions the council has made, as I've watched it change the fabric of this neighborhood. But I have been encouraged by recent decisions to designate ADDUs as a classification. While I cannot change what has happened, we can choose to move forward with the current conditions. I would ask this council not to approve these two new ADD units. Um, I think that this is a decision that should be examined closely. While many, probably even people on this council, believe that our neighborhood has already been lost to the college students, I actually don't. I think that if we halt the building of the ADDUs in the neighborhood, that, and choose other types of housing to be built instead, then we can increase the diversity and the community that's part of this neighborhood. Um, this has been done in other cities well. Greensboro, North Carolina, has done it, um, and found a way to move forward with both college students and historic residents that have been part of the neighborhood. And I believe in Auburn that we can do that. I ask that you listen to the people, including myself and Councilwoman Taylor, who actually live in the neighborhood and believe that there is community there. I ask you to choose what we want, and not the priority of the developer, whose main purpose in this is financial gain. I ask you to do what you would do in your own neighborhood, and I ask you to choose community and diversity and citizens over profits. Thanks for your consideration.
Anyone else like to address the council on this?
I'm Brett B. Jackson again. I am a property owner now. Um, family has been, but I own LBJ and Associates, which I do own a property there and have every intentions of renovating that property. Property have previously been used for low-to-moderate income people in that particular neighborhood. I'd like to say about 75% or maybe a little less of the neighborhood has been wiped out from what I call, even though you may say ADD, its miniature domiciles. These kids come, they have one objective basically in mind, and that is that they're looking for a place to stay, their parents is looking to save money, but we are looking to save a neighborhood. Gendification, I spoke out against it, and Forrest came up and the planning department, and they gave us all of these ultimatums. We're going to let you all choose. I'll take these maps, go sit around the room and draw on the maps, and tell us what you want. We did all of that. But what did we get in exchange for? We got a kick in the rear. Seventy-five, eighty percent of our neighborhood's gone. We were told that we would have mixed housing, some townhouses, some duplexes. Just so happen, I, mine has two meters, and I pray that I'm grandfathered in under that. We were supposed to have mixed housing. We were supposed to have some diversity in the neighborhood plan. None of this taking place. We were RDD, they came in like gangbusters, they bought, they built, and, you know, the man has a right to make a profit. But we depended upon you guys, the planning commission as well, to help us to protect our neighborhood. Save the family as if it was a village at one time, where everybody knew somebody, and everybody was, felt safe, maybe leaving their doors open. My property is investment. I plan to go back to the low and the moderate, uh, end of the spectrum because of the fact being, gendification is one thing. Gendifying is another thing. Gendifying a neighborhood means that you don't only consider the investor, you try to keep some diversity, so you keep community intact, and the fabric just doesn't get destroyed by people that are in, spend three years here, four years here, and then they're in, then they're out. We still have some people who love their neighborhood, like Councilman Taylor and myself, like seeing and being able to go back and visit people that have been in that neighborhood for three and four and five generations. So, ADD, these guys are here for a minute, and then they're gone, we don't know them, they don't know us, we, we're planning an event where we can get to know some of these people, but in four years, guess what? It's going to change again. It's going to keep on changing, it's going to keep on changing. But after forty, fifty years of living there and people that have grown up there, we can come back to what? What do we come back to? We come back to a bunch of buildings, where we don't know who our neighbors are going to be the next year, or the next six months sometimes. So, my thing is this, when you put this new ordinance in place to review and make these buildings look more like what the neighborhood looks like, I think that it should be some mixing and some collaboration between the neighborhoods. Now, planning commission has approved it, but they're the ones that approved the original plan, they're the ones that got this, the, uh, award for changing the plan for Northwest Auburn. But are the people satisfied in Northwest Auburn? I hate to use this language, council, but hell no. We're madder than hell. Because we no longer have a neighborhood, this man has a profit. Thank you all.
Who'd be next? Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Anyone on the council have a comment?
Are there structures currently on those two lots now?
I don't believe so.
Note, the notes say, uh, single-family detached home. Is that, are there two?
Is, is there one?
I'm just.
I think there may be one.
Property description says contains one single-family.
What was the question? Is there a struc, is there a house on the, either one or both of those lots now?
There's a house on one of them.
What's the condition of that house?
Um, it's a whole ha, home. I mean, you know, it's not towed down or broke, broken down or anything. It's livable, livable.
Is it occupied now, Connie?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Has it been traditionally rental property or personally owned?
It was owned.
Any questions for the city manager, or any comments from the council?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I have something I want to say.
Absolutely.
Um, well, uh, you know, I guess when all of this started about the, uh, the units that's, that's there now, I wasn't sitting on it, council, at the time. But, and I know everybody know my argument and how I feel about it. But to add two additional homes to the neighborhood, I, I'm not, I'm not going to agree with that. Um, I don't know what the rest of the councils, uh, are going to vote on. Now, what we have decided, because of what has already happened, is that we want to try to be neighborly with the students that's already there. Now, I've noticed that all of the houses are not sealed. I don't know if they bought or not, but I know they, they are not occupied, all of them are not occupied from the ones that are there. So, why would you want to build two more? I have to agree with, uh, Ms. Hill. If you're going to build, I have no problem with building. I have no problem with improving the neighborhood. But if you're going to build, can you at least build something that's compatible, more compatible with what was already there? I know from my neighbors, and I've talked to each one of them, there's not many left, but I've went to everybody's house in that neighborhood. Nobody else is going to sell, okay? So, we just want to be able, and just like Mr. Jackson said, you know, four years passed, Jack will be gone, the rest of them will be gone, so we don't know what we facing in the future. But, but what we have now, everybody seem to be getting along, it's, it's, it's quiet for the B students, it's pretty quiet. I've knocked on some of the students' doors, and we've had conversations, and everybody's willing to get along. But this, just to continue to put the houses there, and, and they're not, they already, all of them is not occupied, I just don't see no reason to add two more to it. So, I'm, I'm going to have to go, go with my neighbors on this one, and I vote that we don't add the two, um, units that, that's being asked for.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else on the council, everything they'd like to say before we vote?
I have one more question. Um, I guess, so is the concern the houses, or is the concern the use of ADDU? Because I'm hearing a very different argument. I'm hearing, we don't want houses there, or do we not want ADDUs there?
Well, I think there's, it's pretty obvious, we don't want the ADDUs there.
Okay, is it, and, okay.
And, because I, I, maybe you didn't understand me, but I was saying, I don't care about them building, if they want to build some single-family homes, that's fact, you know, we, we have no problem with single-family homes, but we do, everybody have a problem with them building there.
And I, I have a follow-up to that, Ms. Taylor. So, if we were to, if this were three-bedroom, two-bath, you'd be okay with this?
Single-family home, yes.
No, I'm just asking on the layout, if it was a three-bedroom, two-bath, would you be okay with the design? That'd be, I mean, these are technically still single-family homes, but I know there's an argument over the definition.
Well, you, well, well, let me, let me just answer that. Let's go down William Street, okay? There is a two-story home on William Street, that is a, uh, family home. There's a student lived there, yes, some parents bought that home, and it's two stories. It looked totally different from the ones on Canton and the ones on Grant. So, I, I would not have a problem if they built another one like that one, because it's, it, you know, it's, it's obvious that it's a, it's a home. It's a, it's a single-family home. Compared to what's on Canton and what's on Grant.
I'm just trying to understand the, what's the diff, if it's the people that are living in the home that's the problem, the potential people that are living in the home, because I think federal law and state law would preclude us from taking into consideration housing. I think HUD and other things would, we problematic legally, if that's what we're considering our vote on based on who potentially could live there. Um, so I'm just trying to understand if it was, if it's the design, if it's the five-bedrooms instead of the three-bedrooms, or if the four, I, I don't, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of, because we've got a conditional use, and if we're making an argument that we're concerned about particular people living there, I think we're running afoul of potential federal and state law, but that, we're considering ADDUs. ADDUs, I think we all understand, have been primarily occupied by, by college students. But what we're looking at tonight is an ADDU, so.
And, and it's not a problem about who's living in the homes, because students living all over. There, there's single-family homes right across, right on Frazier, okay? And they're, you know, they're just regular, s, single-family homes, but students live in them. So, the problem is not the student, but, and I'm not saying that the problem is the students, I'm just talking about the type of housing, that, yeah, the design of the housing.
The, the council and the staff and everyone has gone through an exhaustive process recently about ADDUs in general. We had to define them, we established areas where they're allowable and not allowable. So, what we're doing is, is we just immediately establish these new rules, and then the first thing we do on it is turn around and ask for exceptions for conditional use. Now, if we're going to establish rules, I don't know why we don't stick to some of these rules. So, that's really the issue. It's not who's going to be in them, or what they look like from the outside. You know, we're being asked to make an exception to a rule that we just passed. So, I, I just.
Mr. Griswold, we voted on these all, in certain zones are conditional, they're going to come before us anytime they fall into that definition, so it's not, we're not making exceptions, that's what we voted on. We voted on, every time in this particular zone, if there's an ADDU that's planned, it becomes conditional, which means we, it comes to us for a vote.
And I believe that was a change, because they were permitted in this area.
Right.
By right. And we, and it was changed to conditional.
We're not asking for an ex, that's a, I don't, I think that's a misstatement, we're not asking for an exemption, this, this is the process that this council adopted, was every conditional.
Certainly, it's the process we adopted, but if we wanted them in there in the first place, we would have said permitted.
But, okay, go ahead.
Councilwoman Taylor's, to Councilwoman Taylor's point is, um, the difference between an ADDU type of product and the two-story that's close by you, is that the two-story close by Councilwoman Taylor has the ability to be, to be rented to anybody, including families. The difference with ADDUs is they are marketed towards students pretty much exclusively. I don't think we will see any family looking at an ADDU and saying, let's move there.
But to your point, Mr. Parsons, I'm telling you, if you designate voting, if we vote based on who's going to live in a house, we're going to run, we could potentially run into federal and state law violations. I'm, I'm just telling you, that's the law.
That's good, but.
No, it is, no, it is good.
I'm saying to you that I'm not voting on that at all.
But that, that's why I'm asking, right.
I'm voting on the viability, the marketability. I'm voting on the viability, the marketability of a house.
That's why I'm asking what the, that's why I'm asking on the conditional use, is it because it has five bedrooms instead of three? Because if we're basing it on there's a certain individual who's going to potentially live here, we maybe have problems that are bigger than conditional use in an ADDU.
And if we're stating our job for conditional use is determining the health, safety, and welfare, and now if the argument is the density of these two properties is maybe not for the betterment of the welfare of the neighborhood, that's a different argument, and that's something that we can legally consider. So if we talk about maybe the density of these two homes for that area, for that neighborhood, i.e. the streets may not be able to handle that, or the, you know, but if we're talking about density and health and safety and welfare, that's an opportunity for us to have a conversation regarding that.
All right, so we're considering the conditional use of two ADDUs in the Neighborhood Redevelopment District. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? Okay. We'll try this by voice vote. We'll see how it works, okay? All right. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe it fails. Do a voice vote?
You need the voice vote.
Okay, let's do a voice vote then.
Or a hand vote or whatever.
Sure, let's do a voice vote.
Dawson?
Oh, ma'am.
Dixon?
No.
Rizvol?
No.
Hovey?
Yes.
Parsons?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Whitney?
No.
Andrews?
No.
I'd just like to clarify with the council, when you choose to deny a conditional use, you should be very clear as to what your reasoning is. So even though that did fail, I would like to recommend that you state some reasons for the record why you deny the conditional use, just to be clear for the record.
I would state that it's for health, safety, and welfare because of the density and the impact on the neighborhood with regard to the welfare of the neighborhood.
That's exactly the reason I proposed it. We've got complaints about the density of it over there in that area and building these type things, and the reason Ms. Whitney gave, I'm opposed to it as well.
All right, so you're good with the record, council collectively, those of you who voted against it, is for the record to reflect that is the reasoning why you voted for denial. Is that okay? I just want to make sure we're going to be clear in the minutes what that says, what your reasoning was.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. All right, are you ready to move on, Mayor?
Yes, we're ready to move on.
Item 10A4 is a request by Travis Campbell on behalf of Buckaroo Enterprises LLC for conditional use approval of a performance residential development, a private dormitory for properties located at 355 Armstrong Street in the urban neighborhood South zoning district. The Planning Commission recommended approval with a four-to-two vote. A public hearing is required.
May I have approval?
Second. You have a motion of second. At this point in time, we'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Carol Ann Carr. I live at 342 Payne Street, and I'm the president of the neighborhood group that covers Payne Street, Pinedale, and Hair Avenue. Our neighborhood would like to ask that this conditional use be denied for this proposed private dormitory development. The neighborhood feels that it is out of scale and character with the nearby neighborhood for several reasons. One is the density. That house that's currently on the property is a two-bedroom home. The proposal is for an 18-unit apartment building to be crammed onto that one lot. We feel that's, you know, the scale is completely out of touch with what goes down the street there toward the school. We have only seen one fuzzy picture of the proposal, but we still think that the building seems too large and not in character with what is around it in the neighborhood as far as just the appearance. The third concern we have is about traffic, because Sanford Avenue is pretty impossible at a lot of times of the day already, and to put something that size right there on that corner where Wrightsmore Road comes out and Dog Legs across to Armstrong seems to us excessive. Our neighborhood admittedly is very concerned about traffic. When 221 Armstrong went in, we asked the city to do a traffic study because we thought we would be having problems, and the city said, "No, no, it's not going to affect Payne Street. It won't affect Hair Avenue." That could not have been more incorrect. We have had a huge increase in traffic on those streets and a lot of, a big increase in wrong-way driving on Payne Street. In fact, I just encountered it again this afternoon. And we've kind of taken to refusing to get out of the way when we're coming down the street and making people turn around and go back the other way because we've gotten so tired of this problem. So we're also concerned because we now have a number of small children on Payne Street and on Hair Avenue. So more increase in traffic in this general area really concerns us. The other thing we'd like to point out is that we have had a lot of recent renovation and restoration of homes on Sanford Avenue and on Payne Street. The former Shannon home at the corner of Payne and Sanford that the Hayek's have restored, the house next to it, which has been beautifully added onto and matches very much the original architecture and so forth, on Payne Street itself. Mary Susan Lowe and her husband Stewart had finished the renovations of the Lowe home there. And I also want to point out the work that's being done by Susan Sergeant Jones and her husband. Some of you may know her. She's Caroline Lipscomb's niece. She called me from Maryland today and said, "I want to point out that we would have been there but for the imminent birth of our grandson." And she said, "I would really like to ask the city, please, to deny this conditional use request and use its ability to send this back to planning to look at something more in scale with the neighborhood, to work with the planning department." She also commented on the number of empty apartments that are adjoining in the apartment building back behind there, and she said, "I don't understand why you would want to build something that big when there are already a problem right there with apartments not being used." And she said, excuse me, I'm sorry, that she also wanted to raise concerns about the traffic issue. The other person that called me today was Boo McQueen, the, I would say, the elder of our neighborhood. And I will just quote you what she said to me. "Carol Ann, please try to go and hold our neighborhood together. The city is trying to destroy it with all this development. All that traffic that we've had on 221 Armstrong," and then I will not go into the rest of this because I've already pointed this out, "so that our neighborhood would like to ask you to oppose this conditional use as it's now structured and see if we could not get something better in more character and less dense with the neighborhood." Thank you very much.
Four. Who'll be next?
Bill Kaski, 521 East Sanford. I want to address perception and not an accusation, so please don't mistake the two. At the Planning Committee, Commission meeting last week, Tyler Caldwell stated that he had received 12 to 15 emails or office visits on this particular property. They were 100% in opposition, zero in favor. Three or four residents of Ward Five got up at that meeting and spoke. 100% were against, zero were in favor. One of the commission members, I'll butcher his name, but I want to say it's Rickenbaugh. Mr. Rickenbaugh raised a series of questions that ought to have been considered. Was it, some of it was density, some of it was in keeping with the neighborhood, some of it concerned traffic, some of it concerned parking. Nobody could answer the questions. Nobody from the petitioner was there to represent and speak to the Planning Commission. So you've got a developer, you've got an architect, you've got a builder, you've got an owner. Nobody was there to answer those questions. So the Planning Commission, the appearance was they did a four-to-two vote without the information that was being requested by one of the commission members in opposition to what the community was saying. So it made it look like, the appearance of, the vote was already predetermined. There's no need to come stand before somebody and answer hard questions if the vote's already predetermined. So Ms. Carr spoke very eloquently about it's a two-bedroom, one-bath house on a small lot, and they're proposing an 18-bedroom, 18-bath, half-bath, private dormitory. Now, it's my understanding from Mr. Cotton that that property by right could have townhomes built on it. The builder or the developer or the owner has decided they want to put up something bigger, more grandiose. 18 bedrooms, 18 bathrooms, make a lot more money than you can putting up what'll fit there. Parking, you require by ordinance 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom. So that's 20 parking spaces that have to go on that little lot. You can hardly put 20 parking spaces on there without the building. So now you have a building that's 18 bedrooms, 18 bathrooms, out of scale for the neighborhood, and you've got to provide 20 parking spaces. Armstrong is a problem street for parking. The only parking that is available in proximity to that is in front of Pine Hill Cemetery. There's some parking on the other side of the road as you go north that's on the, would that be the west side of the road, in front of those other apartments. Otherwise, where's anybody going to park if you come to visit that particular community? If you, there's an apartment complex behind it, but right behind that is KC Street or Avenue, I don't know the designation, and there are a bunch of single-family homes in there. Whether they're rented or not, I don't know, but they're single-family homes. So if you start mowing down neighborhood and say, "Well, we got one here. Let's go and do them here on KC," that backs up to the homes on Payne Street. So I refer to it as creeping encroachment as you start moving these big, out-of-character, out-of-scale buildings into neighborhoods. If you look at the drawing, which by the way, I've seen drawings by third graders that were better than that drawing. You can't tell what that building's really going to look like. But next to it is a single-family home. Now, that home may be rented to students or other people, I don't know, but it's a single-family home. Next to that are two homes that I think are owned by Fuji Realty. They're rented to students. Next to that is a hair salon, and then the rest of that street on that side, all the way to Pinedale, are single-family homes. Right street that feeds in are single-family homes. Whether they're rented or not is immaterial. They're single-family homes. So you're being asked to consider a two-bedroom, two-bath, single-family home being replaced by 18 bedrooms, 18 baths. Does that sound reasonable? If I defer to Ms. Taylor, her comment on an earlier discussion was, "He had to protect the neighborhoods." If I defer to Ms. Whitney and her comments on the prior petition was health, safety, welfare. Those apply to this particular property. So whatever's permitted by right ought to be permitted. Just the rules are the rules. Conditional use, what they're being asked to do ought not be permitted. I encourage you to vote no. We beg you to stop the creeping encroachment of buildings that don't fit the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
All right, Ryan Cassidy Van, 801 South Gay Street. As per usual, I'm going to try to be the voice of reason for, you know, doing what is permitted under the rules and allowing for the development to achieve its maximum density as permitted under the new code. If you go back a few years ago when the regulations were rewritten, this area was designated university services. University services had a more dense classification. You could go taller, less parking requirements, if I'm not mistaken. Mistaken, there were different things that you could do in this zone. In consideration, I think, of that, certain things were upzoned to urban core along South Gay Street. I own property on South Gay. It was downzoned. I think no one would argue that that was a downzoning from university services to urban neighborhood south. At the time, I think you go 65 feet tall, which would be really impossible on this site, not going to lie to you there, but the new allowance is for 45 feet. You can build 45 feet tall. I'm not sure the height of this proposed building, but I don't think it's taller than 45 feet. It requires a certain amount of parking. They would have to meet that. The only thing, if I'm not mistaken, is that they're here to ask for a conditional use. And again, I'm not positive of this, but I would say I think this is the first time that a fee simple townhome development, which I believe this is, has been designated private dormitory by staff. So had it not been designated private dorm, we wouldn't even be here tonight. If they met the conditions of the zoning, which I feel that they do, it wouldn't be here. This has always been my fear as a builder, this, hey, it's permitted by right, it's not permitted, and it's conditionally permitted. Well, is it permitted with conditions, or is it if we kind of feel like it? Well, tonight it seems like, well, if we kind of feel like it. And I think that's a slippery slope that no property owner wants to see, you know, their property rights go down where, you know, depending on how the wind's blowing, we'll see if we're going to give you what you used to be permitted to do. So I'm not speaking whether I think it's a great development, not a great development. I will say it is permitted. They're meeting the requirements, height, width, setbacks, parking spaces, and I think it should be permitted, you know, under that, just under that straight definition. And I will say this, I always hear, "What's not in character?" It's not in character. It's not in keeping. This looks like this, this looks like this. You know, Auburn is growing, you know, things are changing. You can't look at what was built in 1910 and then say, "Well, this thing in 2019 doesn't look like what's built back then." You know, we used to have horse and buggies here, and that's changed a little bit, too. So I think that with an eye towards the future, we have to start looking at what's Auburn going to be, and is this what we have kind of legislated for it to go going forward? And I think the answer is yes. More density in the urban core and then working outwards from there. So I think you should vote yes on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Is everybody else through talking? Hold on just one second, Ms. Carr. If there's no one else different, okay. Oh, hold on just a second. Yes. Yes, sir.
My name is Bazzad Nakshavon. I'm the architect who did the three-year-old sketch. I want to respond to a couple of questions that have come up in terms of density and that the building doesn't represent the character of the place. First of all, I live in the neighborhood. I drive on that street every day to go to work at the university. I bike there. I take my dog to for a walk. I know those buildings really well. So there's a perception that architects kind of show up, they re-eat the right food and dress well and write clothing, and they kind of start creating architecture. I just want to talk about a couple of things that I have considered when I was doing this building. The existing building, which is a... The existing building, which is a two-story, one-bath house, was built about 60, 70 years ago. And it is right at the termination point of Rice Mill Road. The person who designed it and built it 70 years ago had enough sense to put two porches. Very small house, two porches. Why he want to create a symmetrical building at a termination point of Rice Mill Road? That's an important element. That's what I use. I built or designed a symmetrical building. Not a big four-unit building, but we cut it down in two, and we cut down the two individual ones so it would be symmetrical. So that came from the neighborhood, too. The house is lifted off the ground. Not a slab on grade, the existing house. Why? Because we get 64 inches of rain a year, not 4 inches in California. So if the building off the ground, there are five steps in one and three steps on the other side, identical to existing building. Three, the existing house has a metal roof. We tried to use metal roof to be sensible and sensitive to the neighborhood. Four, the existing house is made out of partially brick. In the south, houses are built out of two things, either brick or masonry or siding and stucco. I convinced my client to spend $22,000 more to go with brick rather than siding. Why? Siding, the one I was gonna use, comes from New Jersey. Brick comes from Montgomery. I want to keep the money in the state, and I wanted to use our craftsmen, build a brick building. Brick is an Alabama material. Density? I'm not responsible for density. It is permitted by law to build, as Ryan said, up to like 40 some odd bedrooms. You only build in 18. You have 18 plus two, 1.1 parking spaces. About eight of them are under the building, so you can't see it, and the remaining is in the back, covered with a beautiful brick wall with ivy growing on it. I know the neighborhood, I've lived in it 30 years. I've tried everything I can to make it sensible and responsible and harmonious with the neighborhood. After all, I lived there and I want a beautiful building as much as you do. And more importantly, I don't want my students see that building and be critical of it. So none of the kind of comments that have been made has been unanswered. The building is going to be a beautiful building. The drawing is a sketch. Sketch is different. By definition, sketch is a quick impression of the place, not a CAD drawing, which is dimensioned. You want a CAD drawing? We got CAD drawings. We have plans that are dimensioned, we have elevations that are dimensioned. The building's 30 feet high, Ryan, it's not up to 45. We have done everything we can to make the building harmonious materially and scale-wise, breaking the building down to small units rather than a big building. I don't know what else we could have done. In terms of meeting, we have met with the planning department many, many times, and we have tried to accommodate the comments they have made to us. And here we are.
Can I ask two things? Please.
One, do you have other, you said you have CAD drawing, do you have other, could we see other designs or anything else besides the two drawings that were submitted with our packet?
So we have plans, we have site plan, we have elevations, we have four elevations.
See some of those documents?
Well, there's a set that was submitted to the city, and the city has that.
Would you consider a voluntary review by our downtown design review committee?
Yes.
Okay. I'd move to table this to allow, to get more information regarding more designs, plug-in designs, and potentially have it reviewed by our downtown design review committee.
Just a point of clarification, initially, before you opened the public hearing, was there a motion for approval with second?
There was.
So, no, you would be fine, you could have, you could either have somebody withdraw that and amend or make a new motion, or amend that motion to?
I'll withdraw my motion because the public hearing hasn't been closed. I apologize. I was out of procedure.
But when we're ready to go there procedurally, I'll be ready.
Sorry about that.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? If there's nobody else new, if you'd like to come back, Ms. Carr, that'd be fine.
It was just a brief thing that when someone made a remark, it reminded me that on this question about density and character, by the way, character, as I recall, is in the conditional use regulations, if you look at it. But again, one of our concerns as a neighborhood, and I know some of you on the council have heard this before, is that when the original Auburn 2000 plan was being discussed, our neighborhood went to all of those meetings, and we were assured that nothing would be built next to neighborhood conservation except medium-density developments. And there is no way you can consider 221 Armstrong and some of these other things medium-density. So we have a neighborhood that feels very much the city has not really followed through on its commitments to maintaining a, you know, some neighborhood that just doesn't come up with walls practically right next to us, and that's one of our concerns about the size of some of these buildings.
So anyone else who'd like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Megan, or Caitlin, who made the motion in the second earlier?
Councilwoman Whitaker, in your opinion, and person, maybe second.
So to take a different path such as table in?
I think, I think that the challenge is normally we'd open the public hearing and then have a motion, it's because it's, this was a resolution and not an ordinance, and that's probably how we went down that path. And so, I mean, I think the easiest way since it was moved in second, and as you would ask to amend it, and the amendment would be to table it, if the people are amenable from a rules perspective unless there's an objection from somebody else from the DIAS.
So we would do that as a separate motion to amend?
Yes, since you've moved in second, and somebody now wants an amendment to table if Councilperson Smith so desires, and that's where the path I would head down.
All right, so before we get down that path, is there any other comments from the council regarding what you've heard, and is there any comments related to Councilman Smith's potential tabling of this?
And I can remake, I can add more to it and?
Sure, absolutely. Is there any other comments from the council? Questions, thoughts?
Personally, don't think a nicer drawing is gonna make much difference in the meat of the discussion, but.
As a condition of this conditional use, does the council have the ability to make, even though it says consider voluntary review, as a condition, can we make it a condition for them to go before the design review committee?
We have discussed this as a staff, including with the city manager, and believe that that is a slippery slope. And the reason that it is, is the downtown design review committee is a voluntary entity. So even if you were to send it there as a condition, which would be a little bit abnormal, the ability for, for whatever is recommended for them to have to comply with it does not reside in the zoning ordinance. So it would thereby be a challenge, because even if they went there, there isn't any teeth to that. And there would be no development agreement, because that's one of the things the council has previously stated. There'd be no development agreement that follows this. There are some sidewalk and pedestrian light requirements, but those are housed in other manuals and ordinances that we have that require that anyway. So that specific design recommendations are a little bit challenging. For Cotton, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, I was just gonna mention that we did have a, Mrs. Carr's correct that neighborhood character is part of conditional use review, and so there are elements, there are a number of different elements that are employed when establishing neighborhood character, architecture is one, size and scale, things like that. So I, that information was offered to the planning commission when we met last week, and so I would just offer you that same information.
But we, so size and scale, though, is separate from this use request. Size and scale is permitted by right and parallel to what they're seeking.
Yes, it meets the zoning ordinance requirements, but under the auspices of a conditional use approval, neighborhood character can be considered.
Okay.
I think it's important to note, and I believe as you were indicating and did come up, is there are uses that are very similar, that may not qualify as a private dormitory that would be permitted by right and would not be vetted at all with the planning commission nor the city council nor the downtown design?
Could you give us an example of what that is? Repeat that, please.
Other uses that could be very similar in scale that are permitted by right?
By right?
Townhouses.
How dense are townhouses?
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a bedroom maximum. For example, when Ryan brought this up earlier this evening, these are proposed to be fee simple, but because of the floor plan configurations, they were deemed to be private dormitories, not townhouses. If it weren't for the fact that their floor plan configurations deem them to be private dorms, they would be townhouses, and they would be permitted by right. But one of the reasons why they are private dormitories is because they have so many bedrooms, which then gets you on a, on a pretty serious, you get really heavy on the bedroom in the private space versus the percentage of what we call public space or common space, kitchens, living rooms, and that's one of the main criteria we employ in making that determination. In this case, if you look at these floor plans, the split is about 75/25. 75 private, the common space is on the ground floor, the two upper, the two upper floors are entirely bedrooms and private baths. So they were appropriately defined as private dorms.
So in our packets, we don't have a copy of the floor plans?
You may not.
Okay.
And they're not always submitted to you as part of that. You know, sometimes they are, and sometimes they are not. But also, to the point about other drawings, that there may be something that was submitted that Mr. Cotton and I are not aware of, and I've also double-checked with the city engineer, but we're not aware of another set of plans that we did not show you. And that may be that they're in transit to us or something, but I don't want you to think that we're sitting on information that we have in our files that we didn't?
And the, the floor plans may not have come in. What happened was, I was in a meeting with the owner, the owner slash developer and her attorney, and we got in this conversation, and they said, "Will you make a determination on if this is a private dorm, and tell me why?" And I said, "Yes." And they gave me the plans, and I responded to them the next morning with the number of reasons why it was a private dorm and not a townhouse.
Yeah, well, for that reason, I'd like to withdraw my motion. And I would like to encourage that we table this so that we can have a full understanding since this is a conditional use for private dormitories. We don't even have that in front of us to review. So for that reason, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
And Mayor, just to, just to be sure we're good procedurally, we make sure there are no objections from anybody else at the DIAS about the withdrawal of the motion.
Have to have a voice vote on that?
No, I don't think, as long as there are no objections from a procedural standpoint to the withdrawal of the motion, you're fine.
So is the council okay with withdrawing the motion in second to vote on this?
I don't particularly care for it. I don't see where we're going with this. It's up to the city staff to determine if something's a private dormitory or not. It's not up to the councils to sit around and review floor plans. The staff has determined that this does constitute a private dormitory. So I don't know what difference it would make if we see a floor plan that shows us five bedrooms and?
Then we would make no difference if we had elevations. I mean, it's the same argument.
I don't think it does matter at this point.
On another note, I'm not seeing 20 parking spaces?
There's not. There's not. And that's cited in the staff report. It's acknowledged that the parking is deficient, and that will have to be resolved. That's typically something that'll get dealt with at what we call our development review team, which is kind of our detailed level administrative site plan review. And the site plan's been modified a couple times, but I count 18 parking spaces.
There are also some spaces under the building, that's why?
Yes, I understand that there's two per?
And that includes, that includes eight that are basically in garages.
Where are you gonna find two more?
Excuse me, there are 20. I think it's time to show it to you.
There are 20, there are 18, there are 20.
There are 20 parking spaces, the one that we submitted, the site plan we submitted last week has 20 parking spaces in there numbered.
Then I don't, then I don't have the latest site plan, because we would have gotten that before the packet went out.
I don't, I mean, I don't think we're ready to vote.
I can't, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, I, sure. No, and I think there's a, the balance of the equities, we need to go through the due process, whatever that ends down road. This packet is not ready, we're not there yet, I don't think, in my opinion.
I think in fairness to everybody, my recommendation to the council would be to table this until the first meeting in November, and so we can get a comprehensive look at the elevations, the site plans, the parking, all the information we need to make a good decision. Scaling character is very important, it's very important that neighborhood, it's a very sensitive part of our community. I think it's upon us to make sure that we feel comfortable with what this building's gonna look like and how it's gonna fit into that neighborhood. But there's some other questions we need to get answered, too, and fairness to the applicant and the owner, I feel like we ought to just table this for, I guess it'd be three weeks, because we've got an unusual month this month. So Beth has offered to withdraw. Mr. Griswold is not in agreement with it. Is the rest of the council okay with tabling this till the next meeting? Okay. I'm not seeing anybody say no. So at this point in time, what do we need to do? Ms. Witten just needs to make, or Mr. Smith, somebody needs to make a motion to table?
Yeah, that would procedurally go with that, and then make sure that if you're gonna table, table to a date certain.
All right, the next meeting in November is November the?
Fifth, the first one is, and the second one's 19th. Would you, with potentially tabling, is there something specific? You started to list a few things, and that would be helpful that you were wanting information-wise between now and then.
Yes, so I will move to table this to a date certain November the 5th, first meeting in November, and I would like, in the meantime, that we see a floor plan, a site plan, more detailed renderings of the building, and possibly have them, I don't know that this is possible between now, because I just had a meeting today, but at first glance by the design review team.
You got all that? Okay.
May I also ask a question that probably will be relevant to you providing us?
Let me see if we can get a second on this first. How about that? All right, so Ms. Witten's made a, made a motion to table this with some requests. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second, Bob.
Megan, I'm obviously taking into account that I'm very agreeing to this type of issue. I see the lot lines dissecting the parking spaces in the rear. Are we looking at this as one unit, or are we looking at this as?
That has, that has been, that has been an issue that has been identified, that we are working on a remedy with the applicant's attorney.
Okay, so that will be something that we will see a resolution to?
Yes, sir. That will be resolved.
There's a lot of lines on there, but you're definitely seeing it. It has to do with a number of factors, yes.
Is that, are the lines for parceling out into fee simple?
Yeah, you've got, you've got fee simple parcel lines, then you've got, you've got parking space?
But in the private dormitory?
Delinations.
Would it still be fee simple in a private dormitory? Would that be one?
It can be.
Okay. Okay, with designated parking for each unit, I'm assuming?
Yes, and I think to the point that Mr. Parsons is making, that one of the challenges is, you see comments about the development review team a lot. I think some of you have looked up, you know, we have two manuals, very thick, one for water and sewer, and one for all things engineering, and then we have a number of planning items in the zoning ordinance, and all of those things, no matter what you do from here, and if you approve any item, they still have to meet all of those standards, no matter what, and a lot of those comments are repeated. But even if something is slightly off here, you would be looking at use, and the details have to be met or somebody doesn't move forward, and there oftentimes, things get approved at this level that don't see final design because they couldn't comply, so.
With the, with the request that Ms. Witten put in, will, is that enough time, or should we move to the second meeting in November?
I think, I think with the three weeks, I think most of the things you've asked for already exist.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's, we have an extra week.
You've heard from the architects saying that they've, they've got a good bit of things that may be in transit to us, and so those are things that we can better evaluate then.
I have one additional follow-up question in terms of the parking, again. And I'm sure you all have this conversation, I presume you do, just forgive me. you all have this conversation, I presume you do, just forgive me. We could look at parking of this as one development, 18 beds, but we could also look at this parking as per unit is another way to view this, correct?
That's right.
So in fact, if you viewed it as each, as two five bedrooms and two four bedrooms, we're rounding up at 1.1, correct? We're rounding up at 1.1. So one four bedroom gives us five parking, if we round up, correct? A second bedroom gives us, a second four bedroom gives us 10 parking, and then we are at 22 if we have five.
I know where you're heading with that, and that was the conversation I alluded to that we had with the applicant and her attorney, was resolving that very specific complexity.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And we appreciate the questions, and that's why I wanted to be clear about manuals and things. These are things our staff does every day at the DRT level with the applicants, with attorneys, with designers, and they're very good questions, and I want to assure you that this is what we're doing behind the scenes every day and making sure. And that's why sometimes things can't work in the end, or they have to get a variance or what have you. There are some shared parking provisions, but they're not robust in this area for residential. They, you know, they run the commercial gamut and they are allowed specifically in the urban core, but that's a very different situation. So you haven't voted yet, correct?
All right, so have any other questions, any other comments? All right, so we do have a motion in second to table this until November the 5th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we will table this until November the 5th.
Are you ready to proceed?
Yes, we're ready to proceed.
All right, item 10B is authorizing the vacation of sidewalk easements along Janelle Avenue for H.P. Auburn LLC. A public hearing is required. This is just a resolution.
I have a motion for the council.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second. At this point in time, we'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the council?
I'm there for, oh, we already had that in the amount, sorry.
Any questions?
I used to have that before.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Hey, if I may, real quick.
Absolutely, Tom.
One of my constituents, elderly constituent spoke here tonight about the traffic problem on Cox Road. She wasn't exaggerating. I know you think I'm exaggerating every time I talk about it, but frankly, I get very upset about it because Cox Road has been neglected. I know I live on Cox Road, but it's been neglected. She's right about it. She said elderly woman pulling out in that road, it's dangerous. We've taken a major interstate highway that goes through Alabama and opened it up to traffic on a two-lane road, and I'm not exaggerating, my great-granddaddy drove his Muni wagon up that same road. The only difference in that road right now is they put asphalt on it, put rock on it to start with, and then put asphalt on it. It is a major problem, and I just don't feel like it would be allowed anywhere else in this city, and I may be wrong, but folks on Cox Road, and I know the vote didn't go my way on it tonight, and that's fine, I appreciate what you did. But that being said, something needs to be done about Cox Road. I'd like to know when we, I've been told now for three or four years, we're gonna widen it, first shovel being brought out there and nothing else. And I know I just need to calm down, but I'm telling you, before somebody gets killed out there on Cox Road, something needs to be done about it. And this young man here with his new business is gonna have trucks pulling in and out of there. They'll run over you out there. My daddy is 70-something years old, has had to jump in the ditch to keep from getting rolled by 18-wheelers coming down Cox Road. So frankly, I don't understand what the problem is. There are signs up there saying, "No through trucks," but trucks keep coming through. So I, you know, I'm very upset tonight with this, about Cox Road. We're fixing to add more traffic to it, and, you know, nothing I can do about it, I'm against myself complaining about it, but I'll complain at every meeting I have to from now on about it because somebody's gonna end up getting killed out there, and it'd be a good chance that somebody related to me because most of our areas related to me.
But Tommy, I appreciate what you're saying, and you're right, and I think my sense is, as Auburn, as the industrial park and the tech park out there becomes even more vibrant, there's even more traffic in and around that area, and with the potential redevelopment of the old trailer park across the street, I mean, there's just gonna be more going on out there. And I would say to all of us and to the staff, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that's a safe place. If we're gonna bring more people and more businesses, and that's gonna bring more cars, then we better doggone make sure that we've got a great plan to provide safe transportation and safe roads for the citizens and all the people to be out there. So I hear you, Tommy, and I understand your concern, and I would express to Mr. Buston, if he was here, that this is something that we need to put some eyes on and we need to do it as soon as we can.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think, Mayor, it's important to note that the design may be complete. I'll check with our city engineer on the Cox Road widening, which is a project we discussed during the budgeting process.
The design of the widening of Cox Road is about 75% complete. We're in the process of walking the alignment, double-checking some of our design elements. We've also been talking to Low Chippewa Water regarding their water line relocation, so we are moving. It's not moving probably as quickly as you'd like, and I do apologize for that, but we are working on the widening as well as the roundabout at Cox Road and White Road.
I know you're working very hard on Allison, and there's nothing against you, but it just gets so discouraging when soccer night, it's soccer complex, it backs up past Longleaf, going up the hill, that's dangerous. Ballgame days, next home ballgame, it'll be backed up past my driveway, which is, I accept that that's part of it, but the part that gets so disheartening is every day you see people speeding out there, 18-wheelers being where they shouldn't be, and, you know, I thank the good Lord above, nothing's happened in my family to this point. My parents are elderly and get to the point, I'm afraid for them to go out the driveway. My daddy's almost been hit a couple times pulling out his own driveway. So, I mean, I understand the city staff doing what they can do, and I don't fault them, but if we could reach out to DOT or something and see when they're gonna get the roundabout completed, help that out up there, and maybe we could just start seeing some work getting done out there, because so far, nothing's, I mean, it's just, they asked me about what we're gonna do about Cox Road, and I can't really tell them anything, so I appreciate any help we can get.
Absolutely noted.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have something. Council, I provided a little slip of paper, it's a printout of a Tuscaloosa news report. The title of it is a little misleading for my purposes, the title being, "The Tuscaloosa Mayor: Action Needed to Slow Student Apartment Construction." And the meat of this document is, talks more about the manner in which they're attempting to slow development there, and the mayor has introduced an impact fee for developers. And it's, I bring this up here because I didn't get to come to the packet meeting on Friday, otherwise I would've brought it to you all there. I was, and the reason I bring it up is that I'd like to gauge the appetite of this council as to whether or not we could charge our city staff with reviewing some type of impact fee going forward that is part of a development agreement, monies which we could decide on where to direct those monies, perhaps to historic preservation budgets or to increase public safety or something. I think it's an interesting idea, and I think our city is an attractive place to develop, and with development comes added stresses to our infrastructure, and I think I would like to gauge whether or not anybody here on this council would be interested to have a discussion, more complete discussion about this matter going forward.
Well, you'll hit the legal part. I will tell you on student housing that the Student Housing Task Force is having a meeting Friday at lunch, and we'll have, you know, a report on the findings of the comprehensive inventory that's been done through our city, through the report that we've been given from Auburn University as far as what their plans are with enrollment in the future, and we'll begin to discuss what those two figures look like and how does that impact the future of Auburn. So we're gonna be talking about student housing very intensely starting Friday.
To be clear, Mayor, I'm not necessarily speaking to the motivations of the mayor of Tuscaloosa, I'm speaking just about the general, the policy idea of having impact fees on developers as they continue to bring interesting projects into our city. It may be another way for us to address other shortcomings that we may have in our budget.
Has legal council ever provided a legal analysis on the legality of impact fees? Because I know there's case law in Alabama and other states that say that it is illegal to charge impact fees based on development.
In order to charge impact fees in the state of Alabama, you must have permission of the legislature. To my knowledge to date, and I've also read the article about Tuscaloosa, but to my knowledge to date, only one county has been granted that authority, and that was Baldwin County, and they have yet to implement impact fees. They have to be charged across the board on all types of development. Once the legislature gives you permission, in reading Tuscaloosa's case, and we're not here to speak specifically to that, I think that he's referring more to access fees that have to do with some water and sewer infrastructure, that that language may have been turned in that article. We haven't had a chance to research because I do not believe, and our legislative team, which Caitlin sits on, actually can look that up for me tomorrow, but I do not believe that Tuscaloosa's been granted the authority either to do so.
When I read this before, I was, impact fees? I don't think the author of this article.
Right, so while it is possible to explore, there is that whole level of things, if staff were to explore it and you were to direct us to do so, understand that the legislature would play a huge role in whether or not we would be allowed to go there. And it does require lengthy studies and other things to determine because you have to have a nexus, that's my SAT word for the day, of between the fees that we're charging and what the money's going to be used for and so on, and it's a very lengthy study process. But, yeah, we did study handily a few years ago, why did Baldwin County not implement them? They have permission to do so, and I think it's for all the reasons of concern. It's not that there was a disinterest, but you've got to charge them unilaterally. It's industrial, commercial, all housing, everything. It's across the board, it's all or nothing typically, and that's what the challenge has been. So it's up to you guys.
Would they do, I mean, would the legislature consider a municipality or does it have to be a county?
That is something we would need to research further. I don't have that information right now, but we can get back to you.
So having said that, I would still like to get a sense of whether or not it's something that we as a body would be interested to have a conversation about.
Bob, this is just raw feedback and immediate feedback. I'm not in favor of impact fees, but I don't have a problem asking the staff to do some research on it and edify us a little bit more about what that means and what does it say? So I don't have a big issue with that. I hope that wouldn't be something that would be laborious, that with your staff, it'd just take a little time, you know, but what I understand about them, I'm not for them, but I haven't done a lot of intense research either. Okay? Would something like, I don't know, some kind of remuneration or compensation for road closures and that kind of thing, is that, would that be something that would be considered? Because I know when you go down Janelle, for example, you know, they've got it closed down to one lane for the next several years.
Janelle.
When we do these development agreements, and the contractor asks or developer asks, "I'd like to close Janelle to one lane for the next two years," is that something that we should be compensated for as for the inconvenience caused to the city and to the neighborhood and the traffic and situation? That's just an example.
We've never, we've never asked anybody to?
No.
Yes, for those type of closures. Obviously, through the development agreement, there are transactions and agreements in there where the developer pays for certain things mainly to do with infrastructure, but I've never known one, Kelly, to be done.
Yeah, and I don't know if that would be considered an impact fee or what. But that's the kind of thing that I would like to expand to what.
Right, and we do have to be careful, and these are things that we would bet with the city attorney, and I've learned very, very handily that we have to be careful when we charge certain fees because they can be deemed taxes also by the state of Alabama, and it's, this is a broad statement. These are things where we're happy to give you more information to understand, but there's been discussion for years about certain fees for certain things, and one of our challenges has always been if it's considered a tax by the state of Alabama, then we're out of bounds. So those are things that we can definitely look into if you so wish for us to do so.
So if the council's okay, I'd like to ask the staff to do a cursory investigation, research on this and just report back your findings. That'd be fine. All right? Anything else on other business? Gosh, it's so late, I feel almost, this is out of place, but I do want to remind everybody the state of the city will be October the 28th, I forgot to remind you earlier, and this would be an opportunity to go to Forman Arts Center. I'll be giving a report on where I see the city today and where we're going and what our challenges are and what our hopes are for the future, and it's certainly free and open to the public after work. And it won't take that long, and I'll be recognizing some people that have done some awesome things to make Auburn a better place. So if you want to go somewhere at 6:30 that night, you should be able to keep that date. Okay, so now it's time for Citizens Open Forum. If you'd like to come and address the council about anything on your mind, at least give your name and address for the record, and we will give you three minutes.
Obie Jackson, once again. I am here as a family friend and a purchaser. I've been here before on this particular matter from Minister Williams and his brother, which is ex-councilwoman woman Verlinda White. I was told that I needed to do, and he needed to do, a citizen's request for all documents as it pertains to their mother's estate, which is their mother and their father's estate, but since that time, the property and the communication about what should happen with the property had only been communicated to ex-councilwoman Verlinda White. I find that very appalling after going through about $75, $80 worth of documents and coming before you guys asking that someone tell them who paid $15,000 anonymously. They don't want to pay, even though it's their sister, Mr. Williams and his brother, which is very sick right now, and he's just been moaning and groaning and trying to get out of here, and they're gonna come up and they're gonna tell you how disappointed they are with the city, and Mayor, you ran on transparency. I talked to you about this matter, I've talked with Mr. Davis about it, we requested all of these documents, we find no receipt. I have been a citizen here, my family has been here since 100 years, but like I say, what's so hard about saying who paid it? They're not wealthy. Somebody paid it, she didn't pay it. If somebody in the city paid it, I hate to have to go to HUD and say HUD. We've got people working in our community development department and in our city that refuse to tell us where $15,000 was paid. She's requesting that they give $10,000 of that money back. Now, I can't close and give money away where there is no closing statements or documents which was requested, no communication to these two gentlemen, and they both own a third, it was three people, a third. So what's so hard about saying, "Here's the receipt, who paid it, the credit card number's here"? What's so hard about that? Mayor, transparency means that you tell people what they need. This is public records. You tell them what they need to know. If it's some secret, and then low and behold, keep the secret and let HUD ask it.
Mayor, with all due respect to Mr. Jackson, I'll sit here to midnight and listen to him, but this has absolutely nothing to do with us.
We've said it.
There's nothing, nothing we can do.
She said that while I was there, because let me answer this. If that money has not been federal government money and had not been paid through the city, through HUD, which got the grant, and then it wouldn't have anything to do with it. If it was between you and I, then you guys wouldn't have anything to do with it. But the city has the money and has the receipt.
They've, my understanding, they've given you a copy of the credit card receipt, there's nothing else we can do.
Say that again, please, sir.
They've given you a copy of the credit card receipt.
No, 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 they gave me a blank.
I'm not gonna sit there and argue about it, but if you want to discuss, you need to discuss with the city attorney, because this council has nothing to do with that.
Okay, and that's what we'll do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would like to come in on that.
Yes, sir.
My name is David Williams, and I would like to speak on regard to what Mr. Jackson was saying. saying. Well, my sister says she paid $15,000, where is the receipt? We paid $70, $70, $80 for that document, and I didn't see not one piece of paper in there saying that she paid $15,000. The only thing I saw was where the city paid the contract, so where is the receipt where she paid it?
Sir, we did receive, we saw a copy of that receipt, the credit card receipt.
Where is it? Where is it? In the document?
It was provided to us.
Yeah, we all saw.
Well, it wasn't provided to us.
I mean, it was.
It was provided by Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson gave it to us.
I didn't see it.
He gave it to us when we were, the third or fourth time we've talked about it. I mean, it was like the second time we talked about it.
Did she pay $15,000?
The problem was it was blacked, the signature was blacked out.
And the credit card number.
It wasn't signed by Verlinda White.
It was a.
It was, well, it was blacked out, you couldn't see who signed it. We're not, I mean, I think there's probably disclosure issues with showing who signed.
Why wouldn't you show where she actually was signing it?
I think it's against the law to do that.
The city's signature was on the payment.
You have to blackout certain information. Financial records are required to be blacked out. I think that's probably why. I don't know. That's typically why it is.
I don't know either. But the thought is this, what we're asking is her attorneys is requesting that we pay that $15,000 back between me and my brother, okay? So we're just trying to get proof where she actually paid it, and she have a receipt where she paid, the city says she's paid it, right? We need a copy of that receipt. You would want a receipt if you paid something or paid a bill or something, and you want to sign a receipt where you paid it. And we should feel like, we feel like that we should have a receipt from the city if it was donated or if it was somebody courtesy paid it off or a credit card paid it off or a city card, or whatever it was, we just need to know who paid it. If it was honestly paid by Verlinda White, then we would pay it back out of the settlement.
I would recommend you contact the attorney that's representing Ms. White, and if they're making a demand for payment, ask for their, show proof that payment was made. And that's their responsibility if they're making a demand, just in my legal practice.
Well, we'll.
That would be the process. If someone tells me I owe them something, I say prove it, and then they have, they would need to prove that it was paid. That would be my route I would go. I mean, if you're in litigation, you can get that through discovery. You bust it through discovery, if it's in litigation.
Yes. Anyone else? Move to adjourn?
So moved.
We're adjourned.